Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the April 28th, 2021 Radnor Township School District Virtual Special Meeting of the Board to conduct a public hearing on the charter application submitted by the Valley Forge Military Charter School. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd like to welcome everyone, all of the representatives from Valley Forge Military Academy who are able to be with us here tonight, as well as our board and our administration. This meeting is a continuation of the public hearing that commenced on March 24th, 2021. The hearing is being transcribed by a disinterested court stenographer at the expense of the district, is being live broadcast on YouTube and recorded for later viewing on the RTSD TV YouTube channel. At the conclusion of the prior hearing, the Valley Forge Military Charter School completed their presentation and we accepted public comment. As a reminder, the purpose of this meeting is to conduct a public hearing on the application of the Valley Forge Military Charter School in accordance with the Charter School Law, Board Policy 140, and the Sunshine Act. As previously stated, the board is tasking the administration and our solicitor with the responsibility to formulate a recommendation for board action on the Charter School application based upon information from a review of the application, and information received from the applicant, and information received through this public hearing. The board is also gathering information so that it may make an informed decision concerning the recommendation, which will be provided by the administration and the solicitor. I would like to remind everyone that this is not an adversarial proceeding, but rather, an opportunity for the board and the administration to inquire further into the application submitted to them by Valley Forge Military Charter School, as well as for the Valley Forge Military Charter School to present their application with great order to deliver comment. All right.
We two, actually, one for sure, we can, we can read, and then we want to talk about the other one that came in, Ms. Stern, and get your thoughts, brother, we can read that. The first, let me see here, is from Natasha Thomas, 809 Maple Glen Lane. Dear School Board, I am a resident homeowner and taxpayer of Radnor Township, and I am a parent of four children in the Radnor School District. My children currently attend the public elementary and middle schools in Radnor. I am running to strongly oppose and discourage the school board from approving the VFMA Charter School application. I offer to publicly detrimental to our public schools. This charter school will siphon funds from our school district unlike to boarding option at VFMA live in the area. They may already be attending VFMA and paying private tuition. Now they will have a publicly funded option to do the same. Why would they continue to pay tuition otherwise? Or if they're currently in a Radnor public school, attending the charter school, we do not have to pay for educating the student, but the fixed cost, we can't, but the fixed cost, we can't reduce to public school. And this will lead to less funds in the public schools of Radnor School District for programs and teachers, and ultimately increase taxes for homeowners. This is not just my opinion, but is supported by the experience of other districts as highlighted in this recent Washington Post article. And here's a link to this article. There are many articles on this topic, and I acknowledge that there are arguments on both sides of the issue when it comes to charter schools, which I'm sure you have consulted and considered. Most pro-charter arguments seem to center on the local school district's response in becoming more quote customer focused as competition increases. For example, increasing communication with parents and essentially trying harder to attract the local students, all the which are great. But those studies are an average and did not distinguish impacts on school districts already as highly rated as our own. I have included links to a number of other articles and studies on the issue below for your reference, which paint a concerning picture of the impacts indeed. Do we want to have this experiment in our district? Second, the VFMA institution in particular is unfit to be a publicly funded education option. VFMA has both a troubled history of financial mismanagement and undocumented hazing culture. Declining enrollments and mismanaged financial challenges have been all over the news for VFMA. Here's a quote from the recent Philadelphia Inquirer article. Why would, then there's a link. Why would, why would this history change with the charter school? Because the tuition will be guaranteed through public funding. Should public funds be in the business of rescuing and mismanaged private school? But the culture of hazing and abuse is even more troubling and has been documented in articles such as this one in the Philly Voice. We need to ask what will be different in charter school setting if the program of education were the same as a private school? Much was made of this story two years ago, but it's by far not an exception. Hazing at the school is widely, is openly discussed in alumni circles. In summary, VFMA is struggling financially and has falling enrollments. The application for the charter school is very clearly an attempt to find the means for survival, but there are better uses of the grounds at VFMA if the private school isn't able to stay afloat. It should be rewarded, it should not be rewarded with a charter approval for mismanagement and mistreatment for students. Thank you for your careful attention to this very important decision. The next Ms. Stern is from a, an attorney to the Norristown Area School District, the firm that serves the solicitors, the Norristown Area School District regarding the opposition to the application of Valley Forge Military Charter School.
Hold on just a moment. So we have a solicitor who represents the Norristown Area School District. Colonel, I believe from the application is the Norristown School District, one of the school districts that you intend to, to try to bring in students? Was that one of the school districts listed on the charter application? I apologize, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Madam President, we are, we are applying to the Radnor School District for the charter, but we are open to any student in the state of Pennsylvania, the way we understand it, who can transport themselves to the school. But we are, we did not apply to Norristown School District. You are our home district.
No, that I understand, and I'm going to ask if whoever else is in your room, if they could mute there, I think we're getting feedback from someone else in your room. So Mr. Kristofko, if this is one of the school districts that was listed as a potential district to be sending students, is that correct?
I believe that the Norristown School District is one of the ones that received a letter from the Valley Forge Military Charter School indicating that its intent to open up a charter school and the fact that it may draw students from there. There were a number of local districts that received letters like that, and I believe Norristown was one of them.
Okay, Mr. Petiti, in that event, I will recognize this public commenter, and if you could give me their name, and, and then I will recognize standing since it's one of the school districts.
Sure, it is Peter Amuso, A.M.U.S.O. of Rudolph Clark LLC in Trebos. Dear Board Members, my firm serves as the solicitors to the Norristown Area School District. Norristown received the enclosed February 19th, 2021 letter from the Valley Forge Military Academy and College as notification that Valley Forge was going to submit an application for the Valley Forge Military Charter School. Valley Forge could reasonably expect to draw students from Norristown, which is less than 10 miles from Valley Forge. Norristown has reviewed both the Valley Forge application and the recording of the initial March 24th hearing on the application. Neither have done anything to alleviate Norristown's initial concern triggered by the letter that an existing non-denominational private school is applying to the Radnor Township School District to use taxpayer dollars to subsidize its operations. Valley Forge already exists and has since 1928 as a military academy in the British tradition. This tradition includes the Episcopal Chapel of St. Cornelius the Centurion, a prominent landmark on the Valley Forge campus. The application makes no distinction between its existing operations and the new proposed operations. It is the same campus and the same facilities. The new subsidized students will eat at the same mess hall as the existing private tuition students and march on the same parade field. They are following the same curriculum with the same teachers. The Charter School Law was not passed in order to subsidize private schools. Valley Forge has a long and honorable history of educating our military's leaders up to H. Norman Schwarzkopf and H.R. McMaster, but Norristown tax dollars should not be commandeered to continue this, this tradition. Indeed, whether or not Valley Forge requires the subsidized students to attend chapel alongside the private tuition students, the Charter Appellate Board has made it clear that such distinctive Christian iconography is not appropriate for a publicly funded charter school. In 2009, C.A.B. upheld the denial of a charter to proposed school to be housed on the grounds of a Lutheran church. Quote, "The existence of the cross on the premises and the possibility of exposure of the students to the church bells during the school day were more plomatic. The language of 24 PS-17-1750A5 is clear. A charter school should not provide any religious instructions, nor shall it display religious objects and symbols on the premises of the school. The cross is part of the premises. The students will be exposed to the cross, which is part of the building in which the school is housed. The religious symbol is therefore likely to be associated with the school that is being attended. This violates 24 PS-17-1750A5 and is inconsistent with C.A.B.'s ruling in LOE's and Edith Academy Docket Number C.A.B. 199913." Here, not only will Valley Forge students see a cross, but an entire chapel with a yard filled with religious iconography. Not only will Valley Forge students hear church bells, but will see their fellow students attend chapel. Clearly, on this issue alone, the application violates the letter of the Charter School Law. Fundamentally, though, this entire application violates the intent of the Charter School Law. It was not meant to subsidize private schools, religious or otherwise. That Norristown would receive notice from an existing private school that it recently expects to take Norristown tax dollars to fund its operations remains as appalling today as when we first received the notice, the notice. Norristown respectfully requests that you deny the application of the Valley Forge Military Charter School.
Thank you, Mr. Petiti. Is there any other public comment?
That is all for now.
Alrighty, if you could forward those emails, the applicant, and to the board, I would appreciate it. Alrighty, so now at this time. Pardon me. We will begin our question and comments by the board and administration. And just to set the tone, I believe that we've allocated three hours tonight, Mr. Kristofko, is that what you mentioned to me?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we thought would be reasonable, given that we were all up till midnight last night.
Yes, exactly. All right, so Colonel, we will turn this over to our admin, but no later than, than 10:20, which is about 10 o'clock. Mr. Beckdold, am I turning this over to you or to Dr. Bachelor?
If you'd like, all right.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Stern. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Beckdold. I'm the Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, and I'm going to be asking questions along with the Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Jim Kearney. We're going to be going through the application portion as well as the curriculum section. So I'll go ahead and get started. When we went through the application, looking at page 10, it talked about goal number one. Valley Forge Military Charter School will provide students with strong foundations in both English and mathematics, and students will obtain at least four academic credits in these subject areas to meet the requirements of the PA State standards. Could you please talk a little bit about how many credits per subject area will students maintain as they matriculate through grades six through eight at Valley Forge Military Charter School?
Yeah, Mr. Dan, I'm going to introduce some of our team so you know who's who. First is Lauren Wolfchuck, our Director of Our School, Dr. Paul Lee, our Dean of the Academy, and so they'll be taking most of these curriculum questions. So I'll turn it over to you, Lauren.
Thank you, Colonel Hugson.
Could, could we please ask everyone?
Yes, sir, thank you.
To mute, thank you.
For students, grades six through eight, they would maintain the same.
I'm sorry, we're not able to understand her. Is there a problem with, with the internet connection?
I'm sorry. For students in grade six through eight, they would maintain the same level of, go ahead, you take it.
I can't, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, my apologies, I'm not sure what happened there. For students in grades six through eight, they would carry both one credit in English, math, science, social studies in the four core subject content areas, and in the later grades of seven and eight, we would begin to introduce language to those students of those grade levels to begin to meet into the ninth grade language requirements for graduation.
Thank you. What type of standardized assessments will be used to measure and provide school-wide data for curriculum modifications for students in grades six through eight?
PSAT standardized testing for those grades.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I'm happy to repeat the question again.
Can you, Dan, can you hold for one second? We're going to re, she's going to redo some new headphone. I don't know if you're hearing her, it's coming through really tough online.
So my understanding is the question was on standardized testing for the younger grades. The standard PSAT would be utilized for helping with the determination.
All right. Dr. Lay, I'm happy to jump in, and Colonel Hugson, if we're good to go, I'll just keep going.
Okay.
All right, all right. Does Valley Forge Military Academy currently use the PSATs to measure and provide schoolwide data for curriculum modifications for students on, in the, in the current Valley Forge Military Academy?
Valley Forge Military Academy does.
What grades in Valley Forge currently take the PSATs? Is it mandatory, and what percentage of students on your current campus of Valley Forge Military Academy take the PSATs?
So we have, the, the standard is the 10th and 11th grader, 10th through 11th. I'm going to have to double check with this, we'll check for the younger ones. We have approximately, all of those grades take each of those tests. So you're looking at the full corporation, so probably about 50% of, of that population.
Thank you. So what grades do you anticipate will take the PSATs at Valley Forge Military Academy? Will students, will it be mandatory for students there? And does Valley Forge Military Charter School have the PSAT administration included in their budget?
So I, I guess what I'm, clarification on, are we talking about the charter school or Valley Forge Military Academy proper?
So the first, the, the first, the last question I asked was related to Valley Forge Military Academy, and then I just asked if the, essentially the same question for the charter school.
Okay, can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Certainly. What, what grades for Valley Forge Military Charter School will take the PSATs? Will it be mandatory, and is it in the budget?
So we'd have the, for the first year, the eight to nine, and is it in the budget? Would be in the budget.
All right. All right, thank you. In the application on page 11.
I'm sorry, Mr. Beckdold, can I interrupt? I just wanted to ask what the protocol is if a board member has a question that they don't feel, if they had a follow-up question on anything here. Mr. Kristofko, should we hold those to the end? Should we ask them at the end of each number?
Um, I, I, I think that what the plan was, is that we were going to, we were going to go over like chunks of questions in certain categories, and then at the end of that category, we were going to allow board members to ask follow-up questions for that section. Is, I mean, that was what Mr. Beckdold and I had talked about, is kind of a way to make it flow a little bit more smoothly. So if, if any board member has any questions or follow-ups from what's being asked of this section, you know, if you could just hold them until we get to the end of the section, and then we can follow up that way.
That's fine, I appreciate it. I'm sorry if I missed an instruction to them, in fact.
Right. So you talked a little about, in the application on page 11, talks about English language students and the support that will be provided to them aligned to state standards. So what, speaking about your current Valley Forge Military Academy?
Test and see if my mic works now. Can you hear me?
So to answer the question, this is approximately 10% of the students.
What, what research-based programs does the current Valley Forge Military Academy use to support their EL students?
Oh, hold on one.
I apologize, give us two minutes, we're switching out of computer now.
No problem.
So to answer the question, we're not using a research-based ELL program, we're using the standards that are right now with the PA Department of Education.
Thank you. How does Valley Forge Military Charter School plan to screen, evaluate, and place EL students to ensure their success?
We would be doing assessment entrance exams.
What specific assessment tools and programs will the charter school use to ensure the success of, of EL students?
So we currently are not planning on using a research-based tool, we're currently utilizing, planning on utilizing the standards for the state.
Will Valley Forge Military Charter School hire a dedicated EL teacher to handle reclassification, monitoring, and redesignation of EL students?
Yes.
Thank you. So one of the things in the application is, it said that 80% of teacher and support staff will hold PA certification in their field of expertise. What is the current percentage of highly qualified teachers at Valley Forge Military Academy who hold active PA teaching certifications?
You're looking at 75% with certifications, you're looking at approximately 85%.
Thank you. Talking about professional development and, and in the application, it talks about professional development objectives, be reviewed annually and outlining a timeframe. What are the professional development priorities for the Valley Forge Military Academy for this year?
So the priorities right now are, we're doing three sessions per year. One of those sessions is meant to bring in the PBIS system. The other elements are to ensure that the teachers are, are covered in a little bit more of classroom management skills, as well as differentiation within the classroom.
How does Valley Forge Military Academy run professional development opportunities for its staff? And if you could just talk a little bit about how, you know, do you guys use half-days, two-hour delays, full days for professional development? What are the, just, you know, how does it look at the, at Valley Forge Military Academy currently?
That's a great question. We've done a mix. Actually, do we, do we use some of the professional developments when we enter a week before the students arrive, or some of the times when they are on their breaks? Other times, we've used in the afternoons with, with our local resources, and it really depends on, on the external resources, the, the availability of the IUs.
Will Valley Forge Military Charter School follow the same methods and schedules for, for trainings?
No, we would be utilizing or go, moving towards more ACT 48 hours, so we would be focused more on similarity to what the Radnor School District uses timeframe-wise with their own folks.
Will trainings for employees at Valley Forge Military Academy and Valley Forge Military Charter School be conducted simultaneously?
No, these are two separate entities, they will remain two separate entities. They will have two separate staff members, two separate boards, they are not to inter, interact at all with one another.
What, how, how will the PD cost be properly accounted for so the taxpayers don't end up paying for both Valley Forge Military Academy and Valley Forge Military Charter School trainings?
I'm going to introduce Eric Saw, our CFO of the Valley Forge Military Foundation.
Thank you, Colonel.
Good evening, everyone. That's a great question, and because we're two separate entities, you know, the, the accounting and financial records will be maintained separately.
Thank you. Last question on professional development, what will be the professional development priorities for Valley Forge Military Charter School for the next four or five years?
Curriculum, behavior, and strategic planning.
Thank you. All right, in the application, it talked about Valley Forge Military Charter School helping to prepare students for post-secondary goals. One of the things that school districts are required to do is account for PA graduation pathways. How does the charter school plan to count for the Pennsylvania graduation pathways outlined under Senate Bill 1095 of 2018 and Act 158 of, of 2018?
So similar to what we do with Valley Forge Military Academy, we can track where our students are going and where they end up.
Thank you. How does Valley Forge, or what is the, the plan from Valley Forge Military Charter School to ensure that the students are college, career, and community ready? And how does Valley Forge Military Charter School plan to ensure accurate record-keeping and timely submission of artifacts to comply with regulations for the PA graduation pathways so students are insured the opportunity to get a diploma?
Dan, could you repeat your question again?
Certainly. What is Valley Forge Military Charter School's plan to ensure college, career, and community readiness? And how does the charter school plan to ensure accurate record-keeping and timely submission of artifacts to comply with regulations to, so students are eligible to earn a diploma?
Great question. So we're utilizing the Power School meth, Power School software, similar to what Radnor does, it has a reporting tool necessary in order to track all of the requirements. We typically use the same pathways for Naviance as well with the schools with regards to tracking the students and making sure the, we follow them. This allows us to make sure that we keep an eye on the standards of where they're going, and then to make any type of course corrections in curriculum or any of those, those elements to ensure that they're getting to the best places that they can go.
Thank you. In the, in the application, talked a little about positive behavior instructional support strategies. What is the PBIS program that Valley Forge Military Academy currently uses, and how long has this PBIS program been in place at the Valley Forge Military Academy?
Okay, I'm going to see if my microphone's working. Can you guys hear me now?
I can hear you.
All right, wonderful. Okay, so we've been working through the PBIS system through the last year and expect to roll it out with COVID. We were going to start at the beginning of this calendar year, but we will plan to rail it out next year with the title funding that we've received for Valley Forge Military Academy. But with the charter school, it would be something that, you know, we would work into our training models for the course of the calendar year, so the teachers had their strategies available as the need arises with the students.
Thank you. So the, the same program that you're rolling out with Valley Forge Military Academy you plan to use with the charter school? Thank you. So the the same program that you're rolling out with Valley Forge Military Academy, you plan to use with the charter school?
It would not be the same program. It would be a separate program. The two entities would be separate in all of their training plans and in all of their goals for training for the staff.
Thank you. In the application, talked a little about extracurricular programs for students. And it had in there that students will participate in at least two activities per year and gave some examples of those programs. Does the Valley Forge Military Academy currently have STEAM, robotics, and esports teams? And if so, what materials are available to students for these teams to use?
So we do have an esports club, yes, and a STEAM program. Both of the esports team is run through our IT department, and they actually compete in throughout meets across the country. This is a program where one of our students has actually done really well this year, so we would hope to bring a similar program over into the charter school. We do also have a STEAM room that's created for the students and run through all the science departments in their labs, in physics, chemistry, physical science, and through the younger grades in seventh and eighth.
So Valley Forge Military Charter School, do you plan on purchase or does the charter school plan on purchasing materials for these STEAM robotics and e-school? Or will they be using the existing Valley Forge Military Academy equipment?
We do have some leftover STEAM equipment from from our college and one of the previous programs that we would be bought, we would be utilizing to make use of. Valley Forge, similar to what Valley Forge has done in the past, they would most likely apply for additional grant monies through relationships that we've already established. So we have a relationship with Spay War, which is has a relationship with Temple University and some of their robotics programs there. So it would be make sense to help introduce the folks that are in the charter school to the same folks that we currently use and let them run with that potential association as well.
Thank you. On page sixteen, it talks a little about stream curriculum. It says the school's primary instructional approach will be to use a blended learning model that will infuse elements of the stream curriculum into daily learning. So if you could just talk a little about what is the stream curriculum, what grades does it cover? And if it's currently in use at Valley Forge Military Academy, and if so, how long you've been using it?
So we've been utilizing, so Valley Forge has been utilizing elements of intermixing the arts with with the hands-on of the of the the sciences in addition to incorporating some of our English classes into understanding the literature and also understanding how to do some of the writings. So we've utilized this type of a base, which makes it a little more of a elements of exponential as well as application. We utilize a lot of elements from not only some of the publications that come out of government resources as well to be able to interpret the graphs, look at those, to be able to look at the data, to be able to manipulate and understand how the statistics work, also on how that writing is done, how to take elements out of those. So so we've utilized that one and we've begun that in our seventh, we started in our seventh grade all the way on up to our twelfth graders. So this curriculum with the charter school would easily incorporate the seventh through twelfth, and we would work on the elements of of building that knowledge base through the sixth graders.
Thank you. Looking at some of the the application portion, talking about devices, it talks about Chromebooks and other mobile devices that will be integrated into the program at the charter school. Does Valley Forge Military Academy currently use Chromebooks?
That's a great question. So for those that don't know, we have been not only elements of virtual concurrent as well as synchronous learning at Valley Forge since we've since the COVID had hit. We already had a baseline of Chromebooks from that we had purchased through state funding. And then so we have each of our classrooms and all of our students have the ability to have a Chromebook. They have, we've begun a program of purchasing as well. For the charter school, the idea would be to get a partner involved with regards to letting the parents purchase the Chromebook through that partner. So there's a little bit more control over whether the students can go, what they see, similar to at least some of the schools that I've seen as well that have issued computers off to their students. So the idea would be to utilize technology in the classroom.
Thank you. Looking at the wireless infrastructure for Valley Forge Military Academy and with the increase in the enrollment due to the charter school, does the wireless infrastructure at Valley Forge Military Academy have the capacity to handle additional traffic from the the devices that with the additional students?
That's a great question. Because of of the fact that we had to go towards that concurrent classroom, we had written and received funding through the IUs for upgrading a lot of the infrastructure that we had within our buildings in order to allow for the Wi-Fi to be extended in each of the rooms. So we've we've ended up putting individual ports within each room, which has amplified that signal.
Thank you very much. One of the things that the application talked about on page seventeen was the concept of a flipped classroom. So I just wanted to to talk a little about the current experience with Valley Forge Military Academy. Does VFMA use flipped classroom currently? And if so, when you when you use flipped classroom, how does Valley Forge Military Academy account for home internet access for low-income or non-boarding students?
So that's great. So the Valley Forge Military Academy itself, we've we actually partnered. I'll take the second question first. We partnered with some Verizon, a few other resources, and had hotspots donated for our students that had low income and were unable to access our our Wi-Fi or access the internet. We were able to cover all of the students that were in that range, at least within our own population. With regards to the flip classrooms, we have variations. Teachers utilize mixtures of different modalities within their classrooms. Flipped is just one of the many that they end up utilizing in order to in order to get the most out of the the presentations and classes that they can with the students.
Thank you. And then would Valley Forge Military Charter School follow the the same method for supporting home internet access for low-income and non-boarding students as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. It talks a little about, page seventeen, it says students in grades six through twelve will have several opportunities to learn from each other throughout the year. And when when I read that question that came was, will the grades be separated? Or is this, it sounded a little bit like a one-room school where the classes may be multi-graded. So if you could just shed some light on on where it speaks to several opportunities for them to learn through from each other throughout the year, that'd be that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So no, absolutely. The grades would be separated. You know, each grade would have their individual classes, but some of the crossover could be in community engagement activities with our our students. Now, we find that they learn a lot together through participating in community service opportunities, which would be a requirement of the school. Also, in some of the different science classes, the older students will mentor the younger to help out as lab assistants. We even use some of our seniors to help begin the essay-writing process for college admissions. So using those to get those essays written would be the crossover opportunities we were talking about, not in the learning environment itself, but through the interactions, they would have an extracurricular and being teachers' aides in the classroom for the older for the students.
Thank you. Looking at Valley Forge Military Charter School, how how does the Military Academy handle student placement for new students and how will the charter school handle student placement for academic level?
So Valley Forge Military Academy for placement will do, we typically do an English and a math assessment. That English assessment does also include a reading, which allows us to be able to determine a placement category for each of the each of the students. Within with regards to the charter school, similar type of idea would be done where we're assessing their abilities for the math. Obviously, if they've come through ninth or they they were transferring into us from ninth grade, their all of their transcript may say ninth grade. The test may indicate that their ability is not at ninth grade level, so they would still stay in their normal math class, but would have to be given remediation in order to get them back to where they need to be.
Thank you. On page eighteen of the application, it says, under the specialized instructions section, it says that we dedicate significant time to teaching reading and writing, explicitly teaching phonics and comprehension strategies and fostering fluency by instilling a deep love of reading. How do you decide which students receive phonics instruction in grade six through twelve? And then what techniques do we use to instill a deep love of reading?
So for the phonics-based needs, we would look at the assessments that came in and also use evaluations. I mean, if they needed the special education resources, they would use a phonics-based reading program to help them develop those skills. And, you know, fostering a love of reading, I'm a former English teacher, so we do a lot of things using the resources outside of the classroom, reading plays outside, acting out the plays, taking students to plays, really using reading as not something that you're just doing at the classroom level, but bringing it to all aspects of your life, reading stories that others have written. We found that using those resources that we have, not just in the classroom and in the books, but through experiences of others to help teach the reading-based classrooms have been very successful as an English teacher and myself.
Thank you very much. Page eighteen, it talks a little about
They would utilize the standards through each grade's level to base the curriculum on.
Thank you. In the applicant information system that tracks and summarizes student behavior, what is the anticipated cost to launch Review three sixty? And looking at IT professionals and or curriculum integration staff or instructional coaches, does Valley Forge Military Charter School plan to hire people to support the technology initiatives that Valley Forge Military Charter School has laid out?
So the the purpose of the Review three sixty would not was not geared geared towards at least the first, the first year that we were going to be starting the school. That was something that we would be looking at once they start growing or once we start growing through the classes and growing the the number of students into the different areas that system would have been brought into place. Up until that point in time, making sure that that where the where each of the students would be with regards to their testing, with regards to some of their the evaluations within the classrooms, that would be what we would utilize, at least for the first year, for being able to get the students, the support systems, and also the the elements that they would need to be able to succeed.
All right, thank you. That, you know, the we talked about Chromebooks, we talked about Review three sixty, even that's going to be a year off. We talked about flipped classrooms. You know, instructional coaches, curriculum integration staff for technology, IT professionals, that's a, you know, how does Valley Valley Forge Military Charter School, will they be hiring staff to support all of these technology initiatives for the charter school?
Hold word, that would be Mr. Eric.
Sorry, froze up there for a second. Yeah, we would hire as needed. It would really depend on what we need and when we need it.
Thank you. All right. On page twenty-four of the application, it says Valley Forge Military Charter School is dedicated to a research-based literacy program. What research-based literacy program will Valley Forge Military Charter School use in each grade level?
I think for the first year, we would be looking at primarily utilizing the same standards that Valley Forge's ELA instructors are utilizing, plus the the state standards with regards to measuring where the students are within the the delivery of the curriculum. But going forward from that point in time, that's where we would start to engage each of the different literacy literacy programs that are potentially utilized through resources such as like the DCIU or or any of the IUs that we would reach out to for recommendation.
Thank you. On page twenty-six of the application, it talks a little about electives and students that may be struggling. It says electives may be waived to allow students to make up lost credits. Could you just run us through a situation where that would result in a student having credits waived? And what credits Valley Forge Military Charter School would, what what type of credits they would waive?
So in elements in the past, we've used at least elements of PE and because we do the the physical training period throughout the course of every day. That was one scenario and health was another scenario. Those are the two electives that come to mind.
All right, thank you. Now, would Valley Forge Military Charter School present students with a diploma if they if they would have these courses waived?
Yeah, I mean, I think in most cases for our PE, our students are getting way beyond the the state minimum. So we would follow the state minimum. It would only be waived in a situation where they've already earned their necessary credits for graduation in Pennsylvania.
Thank you. On page twenty-eight, it talks a little bit about world languages. And it says foreign language through partnerships with universities and online providers. Students take online Spanish one, two, and beyond. Are languages offered at Valley Forge Military Academy going to be different than those that would be offered at Valley Forge Military Charter School? And if so, can you shed a little light on the why or, you know, the rationale for the difference between the two schools?
The so Valley Forge Military Academy does offer primarily Spanish, Chinese. We do. And we do have French. The variation that we had last year was that we used a dual enrollment class for Arabic for our the students who were in eleventh and twelfth grade that wanted to take a language and needed it to graduate. Separate and distinct from Valley Forge Military Academy, the charter school would have its own faculty and staff with regards to who would be teaching each of the foreign languages. If there was a we have experience utilizing online high schools. We have experience with partnerships with our own dual enrollment college and other other colleges for dual enrollment programs. I, you know, I am not adverse at being able to utilize those type of programs because it affords us the ability to have more variation in offerings for students. So with regards to separation, there would be a separation with the languages. Doesn't always have to be exactly the same. But right now, minimally, we would look at the Spanish classes and most likely the French, since our French teacher does the dual enrollment. We are still looking at the possibility of for any of the, I'm sorry, go.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So for any of the others, like American Sign Language, or if if we have an interest in those, then we would actually pursue to find out resources to be able to provide those resources.
And I did hear you talk about Valley Forge Military Charter School would have its own faculty and staff. And I I thought I heard a little about online courses that would be available for the charter school. It does reference that on page twenty-eight. So it talks a little about offered live and onsite. What specific offerings will you have for foreign languages for Valley Forge Military Charter School? And what are the outcomes for the students that would participate in these online offerings?
So for the first year, we would intend to have a Spanish instructor as well as, as Dr. Lee said, part-time utilizing the Chinese and French, but we do have availability for online instruction as well for students who need, you know, higher level or something. They have to get the minimum two years of the language. But we, you know, encourage them to get higher to the third and fourth to make them more marketable for a college environment. But for online resources for the higher-level languages, we would be able to provide providers that we would have listed. And, you know, give these students the chance during course selection to really pick which way they want to go, working with the guidance counselor to map out their path to make sure they meet the state standards.
Thank you. So now with the with the online providers, does Valley Forge Military Academy provide in-school support for the online providers? And and how do you vet the, you know, the online teachers to ensure the students are successful?
So Valley Forge Military Academy itself, we we partner with a middle-state certified company that provides so the the assumption uh, that provides so the the assumption, obviously, at that point is since they've re they've received their uh, their accreditation that they're able to um, to teach accordingly. Um, so with with regards to supplying at at Valley Forge Military Academy proper, we do have a uh, faculty support in the room, uh, which is basically at this stage, somebody sitting, helping them get through the technological side. While the instructor would be helping them through the curriculum aspect, uh, with regards to the charter school, again distinctly separate. Um, similar type of methodology can be utilized where you can have a a an adult body in the room to help with that. To monitor the situation to make sure that the students are uh, hitting all the technology pieces in order to be able to successfully complete the online portion of the the class.
Thank you. On page thirty-two, it talks a little about high school students, and it says high school students must have a minimum of thirty-two credits to earn a diploma. Is this typical for your students at Valley Forge Military Academy currently to earn four years uh, earn thirty-two credits? I- in four years?
Um, our students at Valley Forge Military Academy earn twenty-four, um, but we find that most of them do come out with more. Um, this would be with additional offerings, you know, utilizing some of the courses they take in in eighth grade. Um, as part of that, if they're taking something like an algebra that would count towards college uh, high school credit. Um, or using if they're enrolled in a dual enrollment class, using those credits as well to be additional um, on top of what they're getting from the minimum standards from state of Pennsylvania.
Uh, thank you. What what type of remediation remediation options will Valley Forge Military Charter School provide for students? Um, if over the summer, if they need credit recovery, um, you know, a lot of different schools provide something to help students get over the hump if they uh, if they fall short of those those credits needed to graduate.
Yeah, we would absolutely utilize, um, you know, online providers to help with credit recovery, which we have done at the academy, but I'm hoping to be able to pursue some summer options for credit recovery, uh, if the the need would arise. Um, it would be something that we would find would be very important, especially in the English and math areas. To make sure they have those skills necessary to get to the next grade on top of really what they need for credits.
Does uh, Valley Forge Military Academy currently allow seniors to participate in graduation ceremonies if they have not earned enough credits to graduate? And would the charter school do the same?
So if I forge Military Academy, they can only be missing two credits shy of graduation. And while they can walk, they do not receive their official diploma until that is completed. Um, we do before that step is made, meet with the family, parents, um, to have a clear map on how that is going to be received. Um, you know, we don't just let them walk away and say, we'll do that, but they need to be enrolled in the courses. Um, we actually really encourage them if we see like to this point of the year, if we have a student who's failing in a chemistry class. Some of our students are already enrolled right now to try to recover that credit, um, because they know they're going to have to do it uh, down the line. So we would make sure that they are enrolled in that credit recovery and have that plan um, before they would walk, but the diploma would not be issued.
Thank you. On page thirty-two, it talks a little about uh, Keystone exams, and it says a minimum score of proficient on all Keystone subject matter tests or the equivalent is required for graduation. How does Valley Forge Military Charter School plan to accomplish this goal?
So we would be utilizing the the goals of the Keystone exam within the curriculum base uh, in order so in order to ensure that we're hitting uh, specific milestones along the along the education process, so that when the students are taking the Keystone exams, they have the higher probability of passing.
Thanks. All right, um. On page forty-two, it says that Valley Forge Military Academy has demonstrated track record of adapting programming to varied specialized needs of incoming students. Can you talk a little bit about that statement and just shed some light on on um, on what that means?
I'm sure that so one of the things that we fit, we typically find that that are the academy is that um, uh, we have a few students that we actually have a fairly high population of IEP five oh fours, um, double what a public school typically has at our own institution. Um, with that comes a lot of other challenges, and that is uh, where through the public school system, they have been allowed to progress through certain grade levels without the actual capability of performing at the level that that grade requires. Um, therefore, the some of those tests that we do where we assess, uh, we've been able to determine the students um, uh, where where their level is at, so that we can get them into a remediation program. Uh, we've also found in ours, um, you know, the 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 firm firm uh, belief that I have is that a student never wakes up in the morning ready to to be mad or angry, and what you end up finding is that half that time is because um, they're struggling. And so we utilize that, we have feedback from the teachers that allows us to quickly identify young men at our school uh, that are struggling with different areas. We and therefore we are able to quickly assess what's going on. And this is when we determine um, a lot of times that there's a remediation element or a or extra support that needs to be given for reading levels or math levels. Um, so with, but that is again, Valley Forge Military Academy. Within the charter school, um, uh, you know, this part of that element uh, that is important. Uh, other than the pre-assessments as the feedback from the individual teachers, because they're the ones that are interacting with the students one-on-one. They're the ones that are going to be able to determine right off the bat if the student is struggling. Um, if their their grade level is not exactly where their performance level is, and then that would be uh, feedback as well into the system to allow us to get them the resources that they would need in order to get caught up with their peers, so that um, they're feeling successful and not defeated.
All right, uh, can you talk a little about Valley Forge Military Academy's state and national rankings? And what goals uh, you would have for Valley Forge Military Charter School?
So that's a great question. So so within the last ranking that we looked at, uh, Valley Forge was in the eighty thou eighty-fifth percentile. Um, and then with uh, within recently within NIST, which is uh, which is the publications that came out, Valley Forge, I believe was in the was in the top twenty-five, top twenty-five percent.
Thank you. At this point, uh, I I appreciate everybody taking the time to answer my questions. I'm going to turn over to our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Jim Kearney, to uh, continue with some of the questions um, regarding curriculum. So Dr. Kearney.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. On page forty-nine of the charter school application, it says, quote, "The curriculum, performance goals, state standards, and our mission will be aligned in order to strive for a performance pathway six through twelve that will integrate twenty-second century technologies in a state-of-the-art facility." This may be a typo, but if not, what are examples of twenty-second century technologies? And how will Valley Forge Military Charter School acquire them?
Uh, that's a, that's a very good point, and that probably was a typo. Um, so with the the goal of this one is to basically, um, you know, to to reiterate the fact that we want our students to be able to be successful and competitive uh, once they leave the charter school. And so if that in in entails us working with some of the surrounding uh, areas with regards to technology STEM. Um, this is my background is STEM, so I am, it's I I'm uh, very passionate about that element and and building the relationships uh, with surrounding uh, organizations. Uh, the goal here would be to be to to ensure that the students have readily available um, those tools and those uh, potential opportunities via internships or competitions or things along those lines in order to demonstrate uh, their gain of knowledge, their uh, ability to utilize that knowledge as well.
Thank you. Um, the Valley Forge Military Charter School English Language Arts curriculum documents that were submitted for grade six through ten come from Pennsylvania learns online. The Pennsylvania Department of Education Standard Line System identifies those modules as supplemental, remedial, or review. Will they serve as the Valley Forge Military Charter Schools English Language Arts curriculum?
That's a great question. Um, the goal of this of those particular documents was to start identifying or providing a framework for the curriculum as it gets to be built. Obviously, um, as the the charter school um, starts to evolve and as we get closer towards that element of hiring the department chairs or hiring those people that are going to be teaching the classes. Uh, there would be a thorough review of the state standards and a build of the curriculum um, within the the schools uh, domains to ensure that they're meeting all of the standards necessary to to for a graduation.
Are there written curriculum guides for English Language Arts in grades eleven and twelve?
Uh, there are, but we only included them up to ten, because uh, that's the first year, that's what we were looking at offering.
And have core text and instructional materials that will be used in each grade level been identified?
Uh, yes, they have. So most of the most of the standards that we're utilizing currently at Valley Forge Military Academy uh, with regards to some of the texts are very similar to ones that I've seen uh, utilized in my own state down in Virginia and also within some of the other schools. So those those type of of uh, books that are being utilized and those type of material that are being utilized would uh, stay the same. Uh, to make sure that we're meeting the standards. Uh, in addition, we do have some other folks that have come in that um, are finding the students are responding a little bit better to some of the short stories, so we would be supplementing and adding those into the curriculum as well.
Page twenty-four of the application says that the Valley Forge Military Charter School curriculum is delivered with cutting-edge best practices. What are the cutting-edge best practices in English Language Arts education that will be used to teach the curriculum?
Uh, so for for ours, it's it's not only, um, I think your small classroom size is probably the the one of the elements that would be the first. Um, because it allows a lot more one-on-one with the students, it allows a lot more integration with being able to uh, to interact within this with the students, the teacher, plus also uh, other elements that we have that are being able to link in with um, outside resources to bring other folks in through the fields. Um, through um, Zoom meetings or things along those lines uh, so that we get people who are currently uh, currently writing, uh, people who are currently uh, writing the materials that are uh, that our textbooks are based off of in order to allow the students to have that ability to see what is up and coming. What is uh, what is that cutting-edge type of area? Um, so part of that is we have a lot of uh, alumni and a lot of parents from Valley Forge Military Academy that do fit into those criteria. And we could reach out to those individuals to bring them in to help with uh, those particular elements. On top of that, we have uh, other instruction, which is coming from our our dual enrollment programs, which allow um, a lot of our students that are in the higher levels to be able to interact with um, current writers, with current uh, publicists and and uh, areas, the things of those that those natures. So in that would give them a little bit more of an edge uh, with regards to uh, some of those areas that they're going to be getting to as soon as they leave the high school and move into the college.
Thank you. Uh, does Valley Forge Military Charter School plan on turning away juniors and seniors who apply for the first year?
Uh, so the answer is yes, yes. So uh, so yes, sir, we are, because the uh, we're, I think our first program and our first budget is based primarily on through that uh, from the sixth grade to the tenth grade.
And how does Valley Forge Military Charter School plan to address any budget shortfalls if they don't hit their projected enrollment numbers?
Uh, to that, I'll hand it over to.
Yeah, so we have the backing of the Valley Forge Military Foundation that will help uh, and have already stated that our first year lease, if you look at our budget. Um, and any shortfalls, they're committed to the success of this charter school, so they will uh, back it on any shortfalls.
Thank you very much. Uh, the Valley Forge Military Charter School math curriculum documents for grade six through algebra two also come from Penns- Pennsylvania learns online. Will uh, will these serve as the core Valley Forge Military Charter School math curriculum?
Uh, that's a great question, and the answer is uh, similar to what we did for the ELA. Uh, it's a template, a framework uh, currently on which to build. Uh, once we get the individuals, uh, the each of the teachers, the department chairs in to help evolve that curriculum into a into the full uh, uh, curriculum.
Um, has Valley Forge Military Academy identified a core math program? Uh, and are those the same materials that Valley Forge Military Charter School teachers will use?
Uh, so with with so Valley Forge Military Academy itself primarily focuses on the standards. So because we're an international school, we focus on not only PA standards, but also international standards for our math uh, as well as our English, uh, on unlike uh, unlike Valley Forge Military Academy, the charter school primarily focus on PA state standards. Uh, with regards to any particular, we use supportive software um, for students that may be in need. But uh, other than that, we follow the typical curriculum for um, for your algebra one, for each of your your pre-algebra, algebra one, geometry, algebra two. Uh, if when we get to the the state of our uh, trigonometry, pre-calc or or calculus, the assessment is made, at least with the Valley Forge Military Academy, if the student is ready to take a dual enrollment class, uh, in which case we would move them into the college pre-calc calc class. Um, if uh, within the charter school itself, if that was the the capability, or if that was the ability for some of the students, that may be another option to be able to look at as well.
Are there written curriculum guides for statistics, pre-calculus, calculus, and the financial math electives?
Uh, with regards to the charter school, we do not have those made yet, but for Valley Forge Military Academy, we do.
How will math enrichment be provided for students who need greater challenge?
That's a great question. So what we've done, uh, at least for i- in the academy, and I think we would follow suit within the charter school. Um, and that is where we've had students, um, where where we have students that that uh, have excelled within the math, we've allowed them to take uh, take a uh, as long as they meet the prerequisites, the next higher level math simultaneously or concurrently, or uh, we've been able to move them through at a faster pace with the the dual enrollment classes.
And and how will Valley Forge Military Charter School determine which students are eligible for math acceleration?
Uh, that's a, so so one of the areas that we can end up going to is is to typically look at uh, either taking a midterm or final exam um, to see how the students do on those elements, uh, if they perform well. Um, and well-being of a B or an A uh, on that exam, uh, then there would be the possibility of moving them up. Plus, it would also be an evaluation by the teacher in whose class they would be going to have a determination of whether the student would be successful in the class.
Thank you. And what are the cutting-edge best practices in math education that will be used to teach the Valley Forge Military Charter School curriculum?
So the usually what we would uh, for for any of the best practices, one would be to take a look at, or at least start to take a look at some of the um, uh, current engineering fields or current uh, communication with um, a- application uh, elements of the sciences. Uh, this could be through communications with Spay War, it could be communications with any of our uh, any any local consulting firms or any of the higher education institutes and uh, to start taking a look at where trends are going. And to start focusing the students upon the um, addressing or heading towards those trends.
Okay, um, there appear to be a subject curriculum guide submitted for grade seven earth science, grade eight life science, and grade nine physical science? Are there written curriculum guides for science in grade six, ten, eleven, and twelve?
Uh, currently for six, there is not, but for uh, ten, eleven, and twelve, uh, we have those at Valley Forge, but those weren't uh, so we were giving templates more of what the curriculum would look like uh, with regards to um, for those elements for the charter school. But again, we would use uh, as it's separate, we would utilize the the department chairs as well. To evolve those curriculum as as we are closer towards the the start date of the the school.
The uh, the subject curriculum guides identify broad categories of assessments? Do common assessments exist that all students will complete to determine mastery of the PA academic standards and science, technology, environment, and ecology?
Okay, uh, can you rephrase that question?
Sure, ba- basically, I think in those documents that we were looking at with the curriculum, it may have said tests or quizzes, but broad categories of assessments, nothing too specific. Are there common assessments that each student within a course would take?
Uh, they do, uh, at least with it within the charter school last, but the answer would be yes, that we would be focusing on the uh, elements that are required by the state standards. Um, with Valley Forge, we have our own, uh, we have the the assessments that align with the state standards, but are utilized by each of the individual teachers that that evolve and and move the students through the curriculum.
Have the resources or assessments that would be utilized in grade seventh earth science been identified? Have the resources or assessments that would be utilized in grade seventh earth science been identified?
Uh, yes, they have.
And similar question is, is with, as for ELA and math, what are the cutting edge best practices in science education that will be used to teach the Valley Forge Military Charter School curriculum?
So the, uh, the cutting edge would be focused on, on current trends within the fields, current areas that we're going, um, having, come from the collegiate side, I know that many of the textbooks are, are five to 10 years old. Um, if you want to have, uh, things that are cutting edge, you need to start getting into primary literature, um, with regards to talking to the folks that are doing those publications, understanding those trends of, uh, many of the, the, um, journals, will give you trends in, in whatever their fields are, uh, keeping, uh, keeping a visual, a vigil, uh, on those trends, uh, and trying to integrate those into the, uh, into the curriculum on top of or in supplement to the state standards, uh, will help to evolve the, the cutting edge elements of, of where they're going.
Thank you. There, there appeared to be Valley Forge Military Academy subject curriculum guys for grade seven geography, grade eight civics, grade nine ancient world history, grade 10 modern world history, grade 11 world history and grade 12 American government economics. Um, is there a written curriculum guide for grade six social studies?
Uh, we didn't, we don't have one currently, uh, but we would utilize, uh, we, it would just require basically going back to the state standards and, and, and kind of going backwards and, and planning that curriculum out for the charter school.
Uh, what are the cutting edge best practices in social studies education that will be used to teach the Valley Forge Military Charter School curriculum?
Uh, so, uh, recently we were approached, uh, I know from Villanova University, they have, uh, a very, uh, large digital platform that has been made available to the public, uh, that includes, uh, multiple, uh, elements of, uh, social studies, uh, so we've planned, we would plan on utilizing and reaching out to, uh, to Villanova, um, in order to help to supplement our, uh, social studies curriculum in order to facilitate or to, to grow, um, that particular aspect.
Thank you. The, the presentation promoted low student to teacher ratios. What is the planned class size for the core courses, math, English, social studies and science?
Uh, so the planned, uh, it should, it should be a 14 to one.
And how does the Valley Forge Military Charter School curriculum provide a model for other public schools?
Uh, that's a great question. So it's, it's, uh, what, what scenario where, um, you know, we've, we have found that, uh, many of the, um, uh, at least for, for many of the students that we have, we have coming into our school, uh, in order to have the, uh, um, ability to quickly recognize where they're struggling, uh, having that smaller classroom size is, is what gives us the ability to, um, to have a more focused approach. And I think that would be the same, same for most of the other schools as well, had they had had smaller classroom sizes, but we use it. Um, that incorporation with, uh, some of the feedback from the teachers to, uh, to the administration to determine the needs and, and potential, um, uh, slight modifications to provide, uh, uh, a, a quick assessment to determine if they need only one or two subjects handled at a remediation level in order to move them faster through, get them that extra support and then, uh, get them back into the mainstream of the classes. Um, we feel that that caught in, in addition to, um, our, our normal five cornerstones and then how we build those properties, that would be a model in order for being able to help, um, guide, uh, the education.
Thank you very much for those responses.
Welcome.
Mr. Kristofko and Ms. Stern, uh, that is the end of the administrative questions for the application in the curriculum section.
At this point, if any board members, uh, wanted to ask questions, now would be the appropriate time for these sections.
I think, I don't know, I think Ms. Dunn, I don't know if you had any questions?
I, I did. I'm actually, you know what? I, I've decided I want to listen to the whole set, this, these answers. I'd rather not interrupt the flow. So I'll, I'll, ask them later if that's okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other board, Amy, Ms. Goldman, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. Um, I was wondering, forgive me if you can just let me get to my page here. I was wondering if you could describe what your curriculum review process looks like? Who is involved? And can you give an example of a recent rev- curricular review that you've done and what the outcomes were at the Valley Forge Military Academy? And how would that look if, at the Valley Forge Military Charter School?
So recently we had a, an outside, uh, entity review all of our curriculum guides and to give us feedback on areas that needed to be addressed, shortcomings and strengths, uh, we're utilizing that to meet with our curriculum folks, uh, this year, um, in order to do a more of a modification, uh, this re- this is also our upcoming, uh, mid-year middle states review. Um, so we want to have those, uh, those revisions and all of that content put into place prior to that review process. So, um, we also took the time at Valley Forge to, uh, integrate, uh, Atlas, uh, curriculum software in order to help, uh, standardize and to, um, allow us to be able to get, uh, a little bit more, uh, flow pattern with regards and, 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 consistency with regards to the curriculum. Uh, so that's, that's the approach Valley Forge Military Academy is taking. Uh, with regards to the charter school, um, similar process of, of having a team, uh, of the teachers that are experienced to help evolve, uh, that curriculum. And then obviously at the end, it, it, the parts of each of the year is to do a, a review process accordingly to see if there need to be modifications made. Um, so there would have to be a curriculum team assembled and, and, uh, one that would remain, uh, in place, uh, for consistent review.
Okay. But you don't have like a recent example of a specific area of curriculum that you have reviewed and what the findings were and what steps you took to address what the outcomes were?
So I can give you a specific example. Um, we had to modify some of our existing middle school courses this year, uh, to combine the seventh and eighth grade. Um, so the process really began with the teachers working, um, collaboratively to determine the best parts of the two courses that they found were most relevant for the students. Um, they examined together each of those pieces of the curriculum, um, and wrote the new curriculum together based on the findings from what assessments they found were most important to the students. Uh, so it was basically blending of a geography and a civics course. Uh, those two courses needed to be blended due to the enrollment of our students in those levels. So they took each of the two curriculum guides as well as the assessments and all of the project-based assessments that they had in the course, and they combined them to create a curriculum as well as a syllabus that would reflect the, um, integrating of those two courses together. Um, and if you are looking at specific review, uh, the first thing that they did was, you know, document the needs, um, of a course, then they rewrote the syllabus and then they executed the specific pieces that they found were best for the students to learn in both of those areas.
Um, on the application page 51, there's a question there that says, describe how student evaluation will be used to improve student achievement and attain the stated learning objectives. And I don't see an answer. Can you provide an answer for that question?
So one of the elements that we were utilizing, at least for middle states, was to start utilizing, um, uh, testing results as well as surveys, uh, between, uh, the students as well as the teachers and their grades to determine improvement, uh, goals. Uh, to, to determine improvement goals, um, we're currently following those that we have identified for middle states, um, and will be reporting to them, uh, those results, um, when, uh, in, in, uh, November timeframe. So we utilize those elements to help, uh, to determine whether or not we need to have to start having changes in the curriculum, whether or not we're meeting specific guidelines. We found some challenges, uh, with the math-based curriculum from, uh, last year, uh, had may have have made, uh, improvements in, uh, how it's being, uh, presented, how it's being taught. We've integrated a few other, uh, instructors at a different level, uh, in order to modify the curriculum, in order to modify, um, deliverables to the students in order to start working on improving the, uh, their achievement levels.
Um, okay. I, does anybody else have any other questions?
Uh, I have a few, but I want to see if anybody else has any. Uh, okay, great. I, I just have a couple. So, um, earlier, Mr. Bechtold was asking about that you would be having, you would be staffing your classrooms with a certified teacher and a part-time instructional assistant. And, um, what I heard you say is in your first year, you are planning to engage parents as part-time instructional assistants. And so I just, he asked a couple of other pieces to that question and I didn't, I di- I didn't hear the answers. Um, I didn't hear how many classrooms you anticipate to have per grade. And I also didn't hear if you have these, uh, part-time instructional assistants in your budget. If, if you're not able to engage parents in the first year, you know, d- do you have money? Do you have it in the budget to hire these part-time instructional assistants in the first year?
So the budget question, Sarah saw again, I can, uh, take. Um, we do not have part-time, uh, assistance in the first year budget. We are, as Paul mentioned, relying on, uh, uh, parent interaction. And the other part that we would rely on in year one, as Stu mentioned, we do have the backing of the foundation. So if we needed to go back to the foundation and, uh, and get some funding for those part-time teachers or part-time aides, if necessary, we could do that as well.
Okay, thank you. And, um, and then, uh, how many classrooms are you planning to have per, per grade level?
So for year one, we have, uh, 11 teachers listed, uh, for the hundred students. Um, and we broke, be broken down basically into two, four, six, about 10 classrooms for, for that first year based on the staffing.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then Mr. Bechtold had asked about the review 360 and that you were not planning to use that the first year. Um, and that you plan to hire your technology and curriculum integration staff and coaches as you need them and when you need them. Uh, do you have any money in the budget for those positions?
Specific to the technology, yes. If we, if you're asking a specific position, I would need, uh, more information. What's, what specifically are you asking as far as budgeting on that?
Oh, you had, there was a question about how many IT professionals and curriculum integration staff and instructional coaches you were planning to hire to support the technology initiatives for the, the charter school. And, uh, you said that your plan was to hire them as they're needed and when and if you need them. And so I just wondered if you had money in the budget for those needs if they arise.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Um, then there was a question around the foreign language teachers. Uh, earlier I thought I had heard you say that you're planning to keep your staff in the, your existing staff in the Valley Forge Military Academy completely separate from the charter school. Um, so I just want to clarify because I thought I understood that you might be allowing your French and your Chinese teachers to do a dual enrollment and, uh, use those staff members for the charter school, uh, for the foreign language of, I think it was French and Chinese.
So yes, ma'am. Yeah. So those two, um, are considered part-time employees on our end. Um, so since they are part-time employees, they would be really the only ones that we could use as additional FTEs, um, half-time to make that work. But besides the other, the dual enrollment courses is with our existing college. So they would be the only two staff that we would consider sharing, um, in the foreign language department.
Okay, so, so you're not going to use any staff at Valley Forge Military Academy, except you might use your French and your Chinese teachers?
So the French, so to, to clarify, the French and the Chinese teachers dual enrollment means that they are not a Valley Forge Military Academy faculty, they're a Valley Forge Military College faculty member. Uh, it's a different, uh, different entity.
Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate that. Um, okay, let me just, uh, I, I might've had uh, one of, oh, I did have another question. When you mentioned your rankings, you, you mentioned that you were in the 85th percent. 85th percent of what was that? A national ranking, a state ranking? What was that ranking of?
Uh, so my understanding, uh, we will, we will get that correct information and send that to you.
Appreciate it. And, and then the concurrent question was that you said you were listed in the top 25% of something. And so if you could just get, follow up with that, with that clarifying information, I would appreciate it. And, or I think we'd all would. And let me just take a quick peek. One more page. Hold on a second. That was all my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Stern, forgive me. I, I, you can, I'm sure some other board members have questions, but I have a couple more. I just realized when everyone else has a chance to go, if that's okay.
Yeah. Uh, you just, one thing for me, just one question, and then Amy, you can take it away again. Um, this is back to question one. Um, and the question was what standardized assessments will be used to measure and provide school-wide data for curriculum modifications for grade six through eight? And the answer was the PSAT. Um, but then there was a follow-up question, what grades will be administered the PSAT? And, um, the answer was 10th and 11th grade. All students take it. I wrote down, could you please clarify who will be taking the PSAT and how are you going to use that to modify curriculum?
Yeah, sorry. I think that was when I was having some mic issues at the beginning. Um, so we would use the standard eighth and ninth grade, take the PSATs as well as the 10th and 11th grade. Um, and, and the way we currently do it is, you know, we take all the results and find the commonalities in those results. So if we see one student is really struggling in the, you know, word problem sections, we would work with our department chairs to go back and make sure those concepts are reinforced. Um, for our math tracking too, based on PSAT scores, we do use IXL software, which allows our math team to plug those areas of need, uh, into their software programming and give their students more practice. So if, I'm just using word problems as an example, but if we see that the struggle really lies in word problems and that is above, you know, 65% of our students are struggling in that area, then we see a need that we need to plug more into the math curriculum as well as through supplemental work with an IXL-type software, um, to give those students the out-of-classroom practice that need as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Goldman.
Yeah, on pa- page 59 of your application, there's a statement that says that VFMCS has developed a budget with the supports to handle at-risk and high-needs population. I think you mean populations. Um, what is that budget and what are the supports?
I think that's in the special ed, Amy, of which is, is coming up soon. Those, anything beyond page 47, I believe we're getting, is, that's where, um, Ms. LaSage and Mr. Regal are going to be picking up the questions now.
Okay. I was, I thought that the first section was application and curriculum. My bad.
Yeah, no worries. Uh, so are there any other, uh, board members with questions? All right, great. Then I'm going to turn this over to, I think it's Ms. LaSage and Mr. Regal. Welcome.
And as, and if I could just jump in before, uh, we turn it over to them, uh, you know, board members, you know, if you have questions, uh, just looking at the time as well, please feel free, uh, board members, you can write any additional questions on, on topics to Mr. Kristofko. Uh, and then we can look at, uh, you know, envision us, if, if depending what time we're going to end tonight, needing a second meeting, uh, or additional meeting. So you could write those questions and share them with Mr. Kristofko as we move forward, if that's helpful as well.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bachelor. Ms. LaSage, are you ready?
I certainly am. Thank you, Mrs. Stern. Thank you.
Is Regal here with us as well?
I believe he is. George? He is. Um, I'm the, there he is. I'm the director of special education and my, the assistant director, Mr. Regal and I are going to ask a couple of questions regarding special education and some of our students that need special services. So I'm going to start. Um, for the Valley Forge Military Charter School, you projected a special education population of 21. you projected a special education population of twenty-one percent. What are your projections based upon?
So we ended up taking the, the, our, our knowledge of what we currently have at Valley Forge Military Academy. And then we took uh, an average of the surrounding areas. Um, and that's where the twenty-one percentile came from.
Well, most of the people around, most of the districts around are um, lower than that. So I guess my next question would be, how does the twenty-one percent that you're projecting look right now with your school as it is? In other words, is your school at twenty-one percent now? Is it higher?
You're talking about, you're talking about Valley Forge Military Academy.
That is correct. Is it at a twenty-one percent now?
Yeah, we're, we're at about twenty-seven of students who receive services in five oh fours or IEPs. Um, you know, obviously those are from their existing public school districts, but yeah, we're, we're at about twenty-seven last I checked.
Okay, thank you. How did you arrive at the percentages for each of the categories of students within your application?
Are you asking per district or are you, I, I don't understand the question.
Okay, so per category, disability category. Page forty-one and forty-two.
So these are, we believe that these are the state averages that we took when the assessment was done.
Okay, thank you. So for the year, your first year of operation, that would be the year um, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. How many special education teachers will be employed or hired?
So we would plan to have one full-time special education teacher. Um, and then from the budget, you can see there's a support services, professional services category that we would use to outsource or contract uh, working with the IU based on the different, you know, uh, what their diagnosis is and what we would need to specifically help that diagnosis.
Okay, so the, um, the application also talked about a special education director. Would that person be hired your first year?
That would not be for year one, no.
What year do you think that would come in?
So I think the, so the, the, we would probably estimate somewhere in year two, three, and I think what would move it to that higher priority would be uh, the, based on the number of students that we would be getting in and based on the ability to handle those students.
Okay. Um, so you talked about one special ed teacher as you start. What area of certification would you be looking for, for that teacher?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I did not hear the last question, but I did want to bring up that we are looking to hire a principal that has a special ed certification. Uh, to address that first question. And what was the second question? I'm sorry?
Sure. Um, I believe it was Lauren said there would be one special ed teacher the first year. Uh, my question was what um, certification would that teacher, would you be looking for that teacher to have?
Yeah, I mean, I think for the first year, we would really look towards having a learning support teacher that could provide a resource room as well as, you know, push-in, pull-out services based on the needs. We find that that most aligns with what our students need, so uh, we would be able to utilize that teacher for all of those resources and then contract the more high-need services. Occupational speech to those things.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about that in just a little bit, but thank you for that, that, that cleared that up. Also, there was a mention of a five oh four coordinator. What would the duties of this five oh four coordinator be? And when would that be hired? Would that be in the beginning of your charter?
Uh, we would hope that the, the first year, the existing special ed person that we would hire, as well as a certified special ed principal, would be able to help coordinate the needs on all the five oh fours. Um, and in many cases, working with uh, the one nursing staff that we would have um, existing, if any of those needs needed to be coordinated through nursing as well.
Okay, thank you. Now, just like we had talked about the related service providers and the specialized providers. For your charter school, how many speech and language therapists do you think you would have? Would they be a hire from you or would that be through contract?
Yeah, so I've looked at some models of local charter schools and, and a lot of those services of the speech and language are things that they contract out based on the need per year uh, of the students.
And for occupational therapists?
Yeah, same all as well, physical, occupational, um, and some of the more specialized behavioral services would also be considered under that professional services category.
Okay, and I'm just going to go through, there's not too many, just, I just want to make sure that I hit all of them. So things like vision and hearing? Contracted?
Yes, contracted.
Social emotional supports for students?
Uh, social emotional sports, we do have um, the guidance counselor that could hopefully be trained. You know, we would look for that when we were hiring. Um, a guidance counselor could really help out with the mental health resources. Um, and then obviously, if it's a higher level of need, it would be something that we would contract out.
Um, a BCBA, a board certified behavior analysis, same thing?
Yes.
Contracted?
Contracted, yes.
RBTs?
Yes.
Registered behavior technicians? Um, so for your instructional powers for special education?
Um, so we would be looking for the, the learning support personnel, is that what you're referring to?
Instructional paraeducators.
Oh, paras, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, that would be a contracted service as well if a student needed a paraeducator.
And a personal care assistant being the same thing through a contract?
Yep.
So that wouldn't be a parent as you are doing?
No, that would not. That would be something that would need more specialized training in order to meet the needs of that specific child.
Okay, educational interpreters?
Yes, contracted.
Psychologist?
Um, and yeah, that's something we could work with the, the intermediate unit as well to contract. I, I think eventually it would be in the long-term plan to have a psychologist on staff by year three or four based on the need of, of reevaluations.
Okay, how many counselors do you believe you would have um, in the charter?
Yeah, year one would be, um, for the, for year one, we would have one guidance counselor that would serve for all students, and then it would progressively go up by year. Um, as the students increase, we would need to have more counseling services by year.
Okay, and social workers?
Yeah, that would be a sort of service that we could also contract out, working with um, local agencies.
Okay, and just two more, um, transition coordinator for your students.
So transition coordinators um, can really come through the guidance counselors. I like the guidance counselors to work on trans, beginning, um, you know, in, in our current guidance counselor starts going in the English classes in your, in grade ten, um, which I really enjoy, and she trans, works on transitioning them, working on college applications. Uh, for those who want a more military specialized career, helping them get the resources they need. So we would really incorporate transition services into guidance counselors. But for more specific things like independent living settings, if a student needed that, we would incorporate that into the IEP with the school psychologist.
Okay, and finally, life skills coaches to assist with um, the students in a life skills program?
Yeah, so if a student was in a life skills program, we would um, match based on what, you know, their career path or what their next step of independent living would, would need. Uh, and we would find those services for each case individually. I think those are things that really need to be specialized, um, whether they would be transitioning into a career path, um, you know, a, a group setting or, or what their living situation would be. I think that would really vary um, after that eleventh and twelfth grade assessments are done.
Okay. So what would your timeline be as you progress for hiring um, either through contract or through your own people? These service providers um, that are needed?
Uh, I mean, we would like to have them, you know, as soon as we find out the needs based of the students, so preparing for it as soon as we begin to receive the applications and reviewing them and finding out what their services are needed. But um, you know, obviously, if we have a student that we find out two, three weeks in has a strong need for more occupational or more physical therapy, we would partner with the guidance counselor and the local agencies to immediately um, or as quick as possible, obviously, get them those services they need to help out. Um, and assist, you know, their special ed placement or assist the regular ed environment.
Okay, thank you. So what is your budget for all of the special education teachers and the staff and the related providers that we just discussed?
Sorry, I was on mute. So if you look at the budget, the first year for uh, professional services, we have budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But again, that's going to be based on need and we'll hire what we need when we need them, or is contract what we need when we need them.
Okay, thank you. So moving away from that, my next question is, how will you modify your five cornerstone approach for students with disabilities?
It can absolutely be modified. I mean, each cornerstone can be modified specifically for a student with a disability. You know, academic excellence, it's their personal academic excellence. So my academic excellence might be different than the person sitting next to me. But each student would have an academic excellence goal each year. Whether it just be, you know, fluency in vocabulary or to increase math um, or maybe an assisted living skill that they would need. So academic excellence, we can absolutely modify. Personal motivation can be, can be given at every level, um, you know, down to a student who feels they need to work more um, in one area, that the personal motivation comes internally. And each of our teachers will be given training to help increase students' personal motivation. Character development can and will be done for all students, um, regular education students, special education students. The character education development program that we have and, and I've used before can translate through any grade level uh, and any disability category. Leadership, same. Um, we have, and I, I can think of a student currently um, who has a, a very big disability in his interaction with others, and he's come a long way in the last three years. And using his disability to make him a leader has really grown him and actually helped him come work on transition planning for the next steps in his life. So we find leaders come from, from any student base. And, and same with physical development. I mean, that physical development is not just running the fastest mile or doing the quickest fifty-yard dash. It's doing one more push-up, doing one more sit-up. Learning how to push the people around you to be more physical-developed. So I think that could be very easily and actually a great way to utilize our five cornerstones in a special education environment.
So what is the criteria for determining if a student is physically fit? What is your criteria now?
Yeah, well, for the academy right now, we have a standardized um, PT test that's, that's utilized, but I'll let, do you want to jump in on that one?
For the academy, there is a, there is a physical fitness test that each cadet takes as they enter in and then um, uh, into the school and then two-thirds through the semester after they have a chance to uh, attend classes and workout. And uh, their physical development is shown by their increased performance on the physical fitness test. Like I said, we don't expect people to show up and be running a six-minute mile. What we do, we just ask them to try and then do better than what they did before. As we look at the uh, Valley Forge Military Charter School, we'll have the same mindset in all our PE classes on working to get better and learn lifelong fitness skills that they can take with them uh, use throughout their life.
Okay, will you modify the gym classes?
Yes.
So how does a military approach help students with emotional needs?
Uh, so we find that a lot of the young men that we have that have emotional needs, the military structure helps them the military structure by, by knowing what the day is like, knowing what the schedule is like, knowing that that timeframe, that actually helps them. It takes an element out of the chaos uh, that they have to deal with a lot of times uh, in order to uh, to succeed. So a lot of our young men, it's just, it's that knowing what's coming that has helped them get through uh, through some of the challenges that they have. And also, it, it allows us to help uh, reiterate to them that, that as long as they're maintaining that, that assessment and their knowledge of, of their time, they feel that they have some level of control of what is going on.
Okay, so kind of in the same area, I suppose, on page forty-two, it stated that aspects of your school design have been demonstrated to aid students with disabilities. And how, how has that happened?
Uh, so, so we have a couple of students who are high-performing autistic um, that came into the school. Uh, we've utilized the structure of making sure that um, you know, so having individual teachers, working with them on a tame, time base, making sure their agenda planners are in place, making sure that, that we are consistently monitoring their um, their, you know, whether they're writing their materials down, whether they're, you know, they're, they're staying on their timelines, on their goals. That has helped them uh, integrate within uh, within the, the general population that we have. We have one that has, that we've been working with for, for the last four years, who is now graduating this year, has been accepted to college um, and, and is getting ready to move on. And, and uh, with him, he's taking with him those those abilities that he has learned to be able to uh, to manage this different scenarios that cause him to to lose, lose control and, and to regain control and to know what his strengths are and his weaknesses. So so that system that we have in place that has been uh, utilized uh, multiple times to, to let gentlemen such as this young man um, learn how to control his own situation, know what his strengths are, know what his weaknesses are, so he can succeed.
Thank you. Um, in talking about the curriculum, what curriculum or research-based programs will be used in a social skills classroom?
I didn't hear the question, if it was to me.
Would you like me to repeat it?
So we have the, what, what, I think you had said what curriculum-based uh, programs would be used for the social skills class?
That is correct.
So, so right now, we didn't have any in plan. Uh, we'd have to research a few of the, the different tools that would be available.
Okay, what curriculum or research-based programs would you use in a life skills class?
Uh, same scenario, we would have to, we would look at that one a little bit more in depth and get back to you.
Okay, um, so just to continue, I just have a couple more questions with this. What curriculum or research-based programs would you use in a social emotional class?
So we, we'll work on the details of this, write it up and submit it to you um, within each of these categories.
Um, in just keeping on the same track, just for um, three other things. What curriculum or research-based programs will be used in the learning support classroom? In the area of reading, in the area of math? And in the area of writing?
We will, we will get those written up and send them to you.
Okay, thank you. On page forty-two, um, there was um, some talk about a partnership with SPIN, S.P.I.N. Incorporated for Behavior Rehabilitation Services. Would you continue this partnership with the charter school? And if so, what would it entail? How would it work? What are they going to provide? How often do you think they'll provide it? And is this where um, BCBA's and RBTs would be coming from? How often do you think they'll provide it? And is this where, um, BCBAs and RBTs would be coming from?
So at this point, we would, we would take it, the look at their, the assessment of our need, I think, as Lauren had said previously, with regards to what type of external resources we would, we would engage in, uh, and make a determination, uh, at that point, if we would continue with the spin or if we would, uh, if we would move on to, um, other resources, other external resources.
Okay. Thank you. George?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with some questions related to least restrictive environment or LRE. The first question, what is your plan to implement full supports and services to allow a special education student to remain in the LRE?
Um, so in order to do that, we would, you know, utilize, um, the special education teacher to go first into the regular education classrooms with that student, if it's something that's possible, um, you know, shadow them and, and pull them out for small chunks of time if needed to reinforce the materials, um, you know, using a small group setting if two or three students are struggling, working with those two or three students in conjunction with the regular education teacher.
Thank you. Oh, on page 40 of your application, it says that parents will be given several options on the NORAP for placement. What exactly does this mean?
So for giving this, the parents different options for placement, um, you know, some parents would really want them in all mainstream classes, uh, in every application possible. So we would obviously give that as the first choice, but some parents may feel that they want their child to have, um, you know, we have a student who parent really feels that they need that study skills and resource room planning. So we would give them a few placement options, um, based on what they've seen with successes for their students, um, and also to give our team suggestions and, uh, you know, how they've learned before, what are their best learning opportunities? So that's what we mean by different levels of placement. Um, and, and as, you know, educators, if we find that that's not the best environment, we can go back to the parent and redevelop things and make recommendations based on what our team finds, uh, in, in their dealings with the children in the classroom.
Thank you. On page 42 of the application, it says full-time partial inclusion program for students with autism and language impairments. And this is, as Jenny mentioned, run by SPIN. What is this partial inclusion program and how is this LRE?
So I think in year one, um, it would be something where we would not include this, this programming, but in year one, we would really hope to do it in-house. Having a trained special education principal would really allow the principal to develop the program slowly with the student, uh, the teachers and give them instructional strategies that would work to give the, the students the least restrictive environment, um, as well as work most closely, with the teachers to develop the curricular modifications that would need to be made.
Great, thank you. Moving on to social emotional behavior supports. Page 41 of the application lists a positive behavior support policy. What behavior support programs will you be using?
So I've, I've, I've seen a lot of success, um, with PBIS and, you know, given the opportunity, I think PBIS is a great approach to create that positive environment where the school has a positive message. And it would be something that we would tie into our five cornerstone. So a PBIS program that would integrate positive message statements and positive I statements for each of the students so they can take ownership and accountability. Creating that positive learning environment across all levels of the curriculum where it's standardized is really great for, for not only the regular education students, but the special education students to have that structure of the military model, but with those positive behavioral strategies.
Thank you. Positive behavior support plans are typically based on functional assessments or FBAs. Who will be doing those assessments?
So we would, we'd check the, if the students came with the initial FBAs, um, and then work on having a team of people. I don't know what the personnel yet year one would look like. Um, we would hope to utilize that when hiring. Having a counselor and having a special ed teacher that we can hire who could perform those FBAs, um, in conjunction with, you know, the principal of the school for year one. Um, obviously year two, three, four, you're going to want to have a more developed team to product, do those FBAs. It's a cumbersome task, it can be, um, for some teams. So we would, you know, utilize contracted service if, if need be, but initially we would hope to be able to do it in-house, uh, with the special ed personnel we hire.
Thank you. Uh, you mentioned counselors and social workers. What is the goal for the ratio, the staff ratio to student ratio for counselors and social workers?
So for year one, I think we would still have one counselor, um, for, for the hundred students, um, as well as the special education teacher serving as a counselor for his or her caseload. So, you know, if we have 14 students that could serve on the caseload of the special education teacher, it would help to lower the ratio a little bit, uh, in working in conjunction with the guidance counselor staff.
Great, thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to Jenny.
Okay. Thank you, George. Um, who will conduct your evaluations and reevaluations as you get started?
As we get started, it would be something we would, uh, use through the intermediate unit.
Okay.
As a contracted service, yep.
A psychologist?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so you have a screening process. The policy indicates that regular screenings will occur. What areas will this occur in? This was on page 35, um, and it kind of went over to 36.
So all of our evaluations and reevaluations would follow, um, you know, the typical recommended, um, screening, but we can also use screenings each year through the teachers to make sure that the students are maintaining grade levels. Um, I like integrating the software programs to something like the IXL for both math and reading, so it can be tracked from year to year. So I, that was the assessments we were referring to in that section.
Thank you. What is the purpose of the assessments when students are entering?
Appropriate placement, uh, make sure they're getting all of the services that they need and making sure that we're following, uh, the IEP documents that have come in from previous schools.
Okay. On page 39, you outline your process and timelines to implement the IEP. Could you just walk me through what an IEP meeting would look like using this procedure?
Um, so yes, so the, the team would, you know, initially be, uh, formed and, and all the team elements would maintain the same that are listed in the document. But then the, the first meeting would occur with all of the, the key players in the, the team. So the meeting would, you know, go together based on if it was a new evaluation or if it was a reevaluation. Um, and then we would obviously year one, if that needed to be done, contract in, uh, a school psychologist to make the necessary assessments. Um, and then take the necessary gap in time, if it was 30 days or 60 days, to do all those assessments. We would then create the goals and objectives for the IEP moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I think this is my final question, then I'll turn it over to George. What will your resource room look like regarding staffing and regarding programming and instruction? So first with staffing.
So, um, staffing, I mean, that would be initially for, for year one, having, if we have one special education teacher, the goal would be maybe to provide two to three periods of resource support, um, based on the need. And our current resource room structure, uh, we utilize the first five to 10 minutes in just general organization. So where's your agenda planner? Um, is your backpack organized? Um, making sure they have all those necessary tools. Uh, and then our resource room can be a lot of different things. It can be supplemental writing instruction. So if a student needs writing support, uh, they would utilize the resource teacher to do that. Um, and for that resource environment, we were talking about this earlier, but it's something where we'd like to partner the older students. So a senior who, um, may be working towards being a teacher could work in the resource environment to help those younger students, um, in years three, four, in the writing process. So incorporating that with the resource environment, uh, and then setting goals. So daily and weekly goals in the resource room for the student, um, could be to work for 25 minutes on a specific software or, uh, increase their fluency using a reading program. So it would be really specialized, um, for resource room. We like to do no more than six to eight students so that the teacher can really provide that individualized support, um, and, and obviously teacher feedback too. So if the math instructor saying that the, you know, really needs to more work, we would specialize that based on the need in the resource environment.
Thank you. George?
Thank you. So first section of questions related to ESY or extended school year. How many teachers or staff are budgeted for ESY 2023?
What page are you referencing?
I apologize, I don't have, sure, I don't have a page number on me, but it's a section related to extended school year.
So that the ESY program would be based on, um, you know, the needs written in the IEP for the student. So if there is, um, an ESY component that would be necessary, we would partner with the families to make sure they have that service. If it was a small percentage in our school, it would be something that we would contract out, um, to another entity to make sure they're, um, getting that service. We do find that in our current environment, the majority of our students do not need that programming. So I do not think we put that into the budget for year one, um, but it would be something that if we did see the increased need for ESY, we would be able to modify some of the budgetary, um, personnel services to shift to get that ESY service provided.
I can confirm it is not in the budget for year one.
To clarify our follow-up then, what, if a student does qualify for ESY, what program would be provided? Would it be provided on the charter school campus or all contracted out?
Uh, it, it would really base, honestly be based on the, how many students, if there was enough, if there was eight students who needed that ESY program, it might be more budgetarily sound for us to provide that services through the summer. But if it was one student, um, it would make more sense from a budgetary perspective to contract that out.
Great, thank you. Related to assistive technology, who are you employing or hiring to conduct assistive technology assessments or frameworks for disabled students?
In, in the IT, um, department, we would be able to utilize the IT resources that would have to, you know, install those computer devices or things that they would need on their individual software programs, um, to assist them, whether it be in, you know, regular education classroom with speech to text, um, or if it was something that they would need to, you know, help them with typing. That would be all working through, through the IT folks.
Thank you. And related to that, for special education students, what would be that person's qualifications, uh, to help with the assistive technology that's, that's needed?
Uh, they would base that on recommendations from, um, you know, the special education team that we have. So it would be, you know, through the principal, through the special education teacher, that would make the recommendations of those services. Uh, and then they would provide that information to the IT department to find out about the costs and the structure to get that programs that they need for the students to succeed.
Thank you. Our last question relates to assistive technology. Will you be using the SET framework for students who require assistive technology?
It would really depend on the need of the student, but yes, we would obviously look towards adding and, and we can provide more detail when we give you the curriculum for some of those related services. We can provide more detail, uh, in assistive technology curriculum that we would need to implement as well.
Great, thank you. Related to interventions or MTSS, does the school implement intervention activities currently, the Valley Forge Military Academy?
Um, we have, yeah, behavior interventions are definitely necessary in many cases and educational interventions, um, done through the guidance counselor and, and the special education team, um, again, in conjunction with our regular education teachers, um, who, you know, we would see working very closely together, just like they do in our current environment.
To follow up on page 36 of the application, it says, "The charter school may develop a program of pre-referral intervention services." What is this?
So it, for something that it was a pre-referral, so a referral would be, um, you know, the, the, obviously the second step. But if it was something that a teacher identified early, it could just be something as, hey, I really think you need to keep an eye on this person. They're struggling in this area. Whereas that team approach really works, works well in our model, and I think it would work well, um, in this model as well, where we could really ID those services and then conduct a formal referral if it's necessary to either contract or internalize those services.
Thank you. What are the, on page 36 as well, what are the screening activities? And how do they differ from the pre-referral intervention services that are also mentioned?
So the screening activities would be those, the hearing and vision, um, and that would work through the nursing team that would follow the local laws, um, and, and specifications by year when they have to have vision, um, you know, when they have to have hearing checks done, et cetera.
Great, thank you. What is the role of the instructional support team or IST? It's also listed on page 36.
Um, so the instructional support team is going to be the ones who work closely to make those modifications for the student. Uh, you know, in those meetings that we would conduct, they would be open conversations in, you know, what works well in my classroom. What do we see as long-term goals for these students? So the instructional support team is a collaborative approach, um, you know, just like it is in our current model, but especially in this model where the students are all going to be brand new to us. Having that instructional support team approach from the beginning, um, including parents, even including the students as we set those goals and visions for their, for each student, uh, would work with us in that environment.
Great, thank you. So IST or RTI, it's sometimes referred to, uh, was replaced, uh, with MTSS, multi-tiered system of support. So will the charter school be employing MTSS?
Yes, we would follow the standards, um, tier one, uh, you know, be universal approaches that we can use across all, all boards. Tier two, secondary, so based on, you know, the needs of maybe a smaller group of students. And then tier three would be a more intensive approach where one-on-one, uh, uh, you know, strategies would need to be incorporated to meet the need of that student individually.
Great, thank you. My last question, I want to turn it back over to Jenny. Page 50, uh, page 15, excuse me, of the application. What is the current usage at the military academy, uh, the DCIU usage for services to manage IEPs or any reading and math support?
Yep. Um, so DCIU, we work with very closely, um, currently, we have a school psychologist who comes one day a week. Right now, obviously it's virtual, but he was in building with us previously. Uh, we have a math specialist who comes once a week as well. Uh, we get eight hours of services for math. Um, and then reading, uh, the reading is a coach. So the coach works with the teachers to utilize the best practices in their classroom. And then, uh, this year we have a few students who need additional reading programming. The reading coach teaches those teachers how to teach that reading program and then they implement that into, um, the resource room environment. Um, we also do have counseling services through the IU. So if there's like a tragic loss or something, um, is bigger than what the school can deal with, we implement those services for, for larger things that, um, you know, really need those outsourced referrals.
Great, thank you. If you follow, follow-up questions related to that, some of these costs are very unpredictable. So who currently pays for those services at the military academy?
Um, so we receive those all at no cost, um, right now at the military academy, through the DCIU, yep.
Great, thank you. And how might the usage look if the charter school is approved?
It's obviously going to look different, um, and that would be under the contracted services. So we would need to figure out which are the most important for our student population. Um, and over time, you know, by year three or four, we would want to have those on staff. So we wouldn't have to take on the tremendous cost in some cases of outsourcing those services.
Great. Last question, in the same vein with intervention services, not necessarily special education services, who absorbs the cost or pays for the additional services that might be needed from the IU, for example, a contracted service?
Yeah, for any student, it would really be the same because there are times when our regular education students do need those, those contracted services. Um, and they would come through that, that same tier. Um, and we would hope to be able to provide some dual certified people who could be both a counselor and a mental health specialist who could assist in that area.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, George. Um, so I had just have a couple more questions. Are all of the buildings and access to buildings, including, you know, the restrooms and lockers and lunch tables, are they ADA compliant?
I mean, I can, I can actually take that question. Um, uh, my name is George with the Director of Facilities. Currently, depending on this, the building, um, with the age of the campus, we have multiple buildings that are ADA accessible. Some of the buildings, um, would have to be, uh, retrofitted to provide those services when they were, if they were needed.
Okay, thank you. So how will you accommodate, um, any disabled students within the physical development and milita- military training model? So this is for students that would possibly fall under like ADA, the chapter, um, 15.
Yeah, we would modify the physical development curriculum, um, to meet the needs of the student. There's no standard, um, physical development standards. It's, it's based on how many they can do and, and increasing, you know, if the student can't participate in a running activity, uh, we would supplement with an additional, um, arm. we would supplement with an additional arm workout that could be modified for the student. So there would be no specific, you know, they have to do these X, Y, Z for those students, they would be modified.
Okay. What is your professional development plan for restraints? What model do you currently use and what model will you be using?
So we don't currently have students who would need to be restrained, but we would provide training for our teachers prior to the start of the year. We would have one person who would be responsible for that restraint. So if it would be the special education teacher or someone else on the team, that specific person would have training and restraints and be called upon if that was needed.
Okay, thank you. What is your timeline to have all of the staff trained?
Specifically in restraints or in general?
In restraints.
I mean, we would like to have that in place by day one. You know, we would utilize the months leading up to it. Once the one person is trained, they could incorporate that into the professional development the week prior to the start of the school year.
And this is a question about records. You have an exceptional student records confidentiality policy. How is this policy different from your FERPA policy for the regular student population?
What page are you referring to?
So I believe that would be on page seventy seven through eighty four. Looks like it's, it might be the appendix B. I think that's what that, my notation there. Appendix B, seventy seven through eighty four.
And may, would you be so kind as to please repeat the question?
Absolutely. You have an exceptional student records confidentiality policy. How is that policy different from your FERPA policy for the regular student population?
To keep consistency and to keep, to keep, you know, policies and procedures written up the same, we would treat them both equally with following the firmer guidelines.
Thank you.
Related to homebound instruction, this is in appendix B, pages ninety to ninety five. Why is your policy on homebound instruction part of the special education policies?
So that homebound instructional policy could really be utilized for not just the special education students, but for regular education students as well. Could be utilized for, you know, we had a student recently who broke their pelvis and they have homebound instruction today, actually. So it could be utilized throughout both areas, regular and special. I don't think it would be just towards one area.
Okay, great, thank you. Related to service animals policy, and this is appendix B, page one fifty three. What person or persons will be in charge of determining a direct and immediate threat as defined in your policy?
Yeah, it would be the assistant principal who would also serve as the disciplinarian in that, in that respect.
Great. And last question, appendix B, page one fifty four. Will anyone at the charter school have experience with miniature horses, which is permitted into your buildings per this policy?
Yeah, if we came across that, we would find someone who has experience with it. We've run a horsemanship program for ninety-two years here.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions that Jenny and I have.
I have a couple just clarifying questions. Would this be the time for the special ed?
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
Thank you. This is back to, just looking for clarification on this. So the question was, how will you modify the five cornerstone approach for students with disabilities? And I believe you said that each student has their own goals and their own personal motivation. Are you, are these goals, are you referring to I E P goals in that statement?
I was not. A personal motivation goal could be to get a leadership position or to become a member of a community service club. It's not the I E P goals. It would be what motivates each individual student for success.
Okay, so are these goals written down, these personal goals?
It would be something that they, that they could document. Yeah, absolutely. It would be documented goals at the beginning of the year, something that they would track throughout to make sure they're meeting the needs of the cornerstones. And this is just for any student, not just special education students.
Okay, so if you're modifying them though for a special ed student, would that be part of their I E P?
I would not write the five cornerstone goals into the I E Ps specifically.
And those individual goals are not written down for regular students either?
I mean, they're not written down, they could be as part of, you know, a physical development. Those goals are documented goals. The leadership goals are documented, like what position they want to have, if they want to take on a leadership position. That academic excellence goals are documented if they want to increase fluency, work with the software program to, you know, increase their grade average. So those are actually documented as part of the yearly planning process with the guidance counselors.
Okay, thank you. And then I just want another follow-up. So you mentioned you are anticipating a pretty sizable number of students will come in with some kind of I E P. What is your timeline to convene your team upon a student entering with an I E P?
I mean, within the first thirty days, I would express that the team would meet for each student. We would set up those meetings, you know, within that first thirty days and then decide based on the last time they've been evaluated or had a reevaluation, when the next meeting would be, whether it would be six months, a year, two years, or as need arises. We spoke about referrals before. So if there was a referral for a behavioral challenge or an intervention needed, then the team would reconvene again. But we would like to meet that within the first thirty days for all I E P students.
And sometimes special ed students come in with their documentation basically out of compliance. What is your plan to deal with a large influx that might not be?
So within that thirty day, you know, period, we would see that, hey, he hasn't been reevaluated in a year. And that's when we would reach out to, in year one, we would reach out to the intermediate unit services to come in and provide that reevaluation. And then once the results of the reevaluation were in, we would reconvene the instructional support team to develop the goals for the students.
I thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I think Dr. Bachelor, do you want to take it from here? I think is Mr. Dukovich going to be doing the next section?
May I ask a couple of special education questions or no? Do we not have time?
I think Dr. Bachelor was suggesting that we submit questions to Mr. Kristofka.
I think that might be best, just, I'm just looking at the time, you know, just looking at the time and knowing that we're, you know, we're going to have to reassess somewhere around ten o'clock. So I think that might be best for board members to, you know, list their questions and get them to Mr. Kristofka and we'll continue with some of the questions that we already have planned for this evening, if that makes sense moving forward.
Welcome, Mr. Dukovich.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. I'm going to ask questions regarding the calendar, evaluation tools and community policies.
Mr. Dukovich is our Director of Elementary Education. I just wanted to, so people know who you are.
Thank you, Mrs. Stern. I should have begun with that.
That's fine, no worries.
So beginning with the calendar for the charter school application, can you share how many student days and how many staff days are included in the calendar?
I don't have a copy with me, but I can tell you that we, that is going to be based exactly on the timeframe that the Redner School District and surrounding schools, but Redner School District was what the template was. Similar type of ratios with the student days and the teaching staff days.
Thank you. On that same note, would, should we assume that holidays, in-service days and administrative days would also follow suit?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the evaluation tool section, you indicated in the application that you would use the Danielson framework for teachers and the Pennsylvania Department of Education Leadership Framework for administrations. Can you share how the tools will be used within your system?
So for the Danielson tools, we would definitely use them on a regular yearly basis to provide both in-class observations as well as goal setting with the teachers. So incorporating what the teachers feel that their goals are and then, you know, following up with them within a year's time. One formal assessment at least per year with the Danielson model, as well as conducting those twenty-minute walkthrough evaluations throughout the year. If we see a specific need of the school where we want to, you know, enhance our classroom management, we would have those six criteria that we would look at each teacher on in the area of classroom management and come back with goals based on that. And then, you know, they would be part of their permanent file and evaluated each year to determine what the next steps are, whether it's educational next steps, classroom management techniques, or what each teacher feels they need.
Thank you. Would all staff receive like a clinical observation in person or would some have the ability to have an alternate observation process, like a research project or something like, along those lines?
I mean, it would be an alternative if a staff member wanted to utilize that, but we would have one classroom observation in person each year, at least for each teacher.
And would observation look any different for those who are certified compared to those who are not non-certified teachers?
I think the goals would change a lot based on levels of certification. In one of our goal sections, we noted that we would want a grouping each year to move towards those certification levels. So by adding that into the individual staff goals, it would really allow them to move forward at a quicker pace, working with the administrative staff to find those resources. But for a standard observation, I mean, yes, we would look through the same tools for each teacher to have based on the Danielson framework.
Thank you. Can you share what your induction process and over the course of the school year will look like?
So for the training plan, it would be part of, you know, incorporating the teachers into the system, having them do training at the beginning of the year. And then as we spoke about the built-in in-service days, and then years two through five, we would be able to use, utilize a mentor program. Because each year as we would grow, we would have veteran teachers. Year one, we obviously would not, but by years two through five, we would have a mentor program where the teachers would, on those specifically laid out dates throughout the school year, have time to meet with their mentor and use their mentor resources.
Thank you. This was touched on earlier, but on page ten, why are only assessment tools listed to ascertain student learning, including the P S A T and the S A T? How would you plan to close achievement gaps if students are so far behind or not in a tested year?
So if it was a non-tested year, the students could use a software program, like an I X L for tracking, and we would base goals on that for the individual student as a way to keep records each year from what they're growing. We would also have their year end and results, basically if it was a project-based assessment or if it was something that was done throughout the entire, you know, ninth grade. But if it was a non-testing year, we would provide an alternative method to make sure all the students were staying on task and then giving the additional resources they needed if they weren't.
Are there other specific tests that you would use to assess academic performance and growth? I know you've talked about this in different categories, but under evaluation tools, it's also a measure of student effectiveness in meeting their students' growth measures.
At this time, the plan is just for those initial assessments. But obviously, if we see that the need arises, we can look at different testing methods through P S S As or something that would be, you know, better suited for a sixth-grade student versus the eighth-grade student. So I think that would be a part of our goal as we build the charter school to increase the measures of standardized testing, but not, you know, have specific targets for it for that first year.
Thank you. On page sixteen, the education philosophy states that, quote, "Curriculum is more rigorous than that of local and state levels," end quote. Can you share how?
So I think, so part of that incorporates that although we use state standards, curriculums can be based on state standards as a charter school. I think you'll have a little bit more flexibility of being able to pull in some of the standards that are coming, or not necessarily standards, but guidances that are coming from higher education to be able to push and direct redirect some of the students at a different level than you can potentially get at some of the local public schools, which are focused more on, or well, than some of the local public schools.
Okay, I'm going to shift over to community policies next. Can you share how V F M A will handle community or public complaints?
Did you say how with Valley Forge Military Academy or the charter school?
I'm sorry, the charter. How will you, how will you handle public complaints with regard to your policy?
So part of what we've done, you know, part of what we do at the academy and I think would be successful in the charter school is to, is engagement, is to make sure that instead of waiting for elements to come back towards us, is to start to engage with the local community, be involved with community service projects to engage the parents, have, build that, that relationship with a local community leaders, some of the local, I guess, local businesses, local government areas, as well as incorporate, you know, or build a parents association that extends throughout the community and is involved within the community. So part of the success is to not wait for the things to come to you as but to be a little bit more proactive and go out and engage the local community in positive interaction.
Thank you. My final question is, how will any community policies differ within the charter as opposed to the academy? Or if they will?
So, so obviously there's, so, you know, obviously at this point, it's, it's, Valley Forge has had, you know, ups and downs with regards to its relationships with, with the community. And part of that, having been a product of there, I know that it was always where we had positive interaction with the communities, that's where we had positive relationships. When you don't have interactions with the, with the community, you end up getting ideas or negative thoughts thrown around when they're not necessarily true. So the, the idea would be to simply utilize the positive elements, those things that worked for the academy that have been successful, those lessons learned and incorporate those into the charter school with being able to make sure that it stays positive. You're listening to the people in the community, you find out what the potential challenges are and address them head-on instead of waiting for them to crawl up and cause challenges.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Bechtel. Unless there was something else, I'm sorry if I cut anybody off there.
No.
I just, I just wanted to add in that like the Valley Forge Military Academy has done for numerous years, we would encourage the charter school to get out and support the Radnor Fall Fest, the Memorial Day Parade by their drill team out there and take part in community events to show the school and the awesome students that it would have.
Thank you.
Mr. Bechtel, we're not able to hear you.
We're still not able to hear you.
There you go. Dr. Bachelor, did he leave the screen?
He may have, he may have tried to give you some trouble with the mic.
There he is.
There he is.
All right. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Dan Bechtel, Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. I've got questions related to the student section. So under the Board of Trustees policy on page two of the student section, it says, it references kindergarten when it talks about the lottery system. It says set forth below an order beginning with kindergarten and proceeding through grades in order. Just wanted to get clarification about the reference to kindergarten in the, in this policy.
That is a typo.
Thank you. On page three, it says in the event that a seat is not available for admission to the grade applied for, and there's no space in the grade that they should attend, said student would be placed on the waitlist in the next numerical position available. Two questions related to that. Number one, what are the thresholds for each grade level? And number two, are these thresholds related to the ones set forth in the application?
Yeah, we, we've put in our projected enrollment. We would assess those depending on demand. If the demand exceeded the supply of what we thought we, we were going to have, we would look at hiring more and, and growing at, at that point.
Okay. Colonel Hugustis, so do, do you have set thresholds for the, for the grade levels or, or not yet?
Not for the grade levels, for the school total we do.
Okay. Thank you. On page 25, under exceptions to use of force, it talks about sometimes that, that employees may use force against students. What research-based restraint training programs does Valley Forge Military Academy provide their staff to ensure the ability to safely quell disturbance or protect students from themselves or others? And then would this be the same program that Valley Forge Charter, Military Charter School would use?
I think I did speak about that one previously, but I'll, I'll be happy to say it again. For the, you know, we would have a specific person trained for restraints each year. We do not currently have anything from the teaching staff at Valley Forge Military Academy. And since that's kind of the area of focus, we would have a specific restraint coordinator that would be trained by the start of the year and then, you know, spreading to others as the year went on. And I don't have a specific program yet that we would utilize, but it would be something that we would research. And I think I said that we would incorporate that when we resubmit the curriculum section for special ed.
Thank you very much. On page 32 of the section, it's references and says in conjunction with the charter school director of the ESL program. Is this a position that is currently listed in the budget for the charter school?
Sorry, go ahead, Lauren, I'm sorry.
That's one I think, Eric, that's not listed for year one.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Under the page 49 of the extracurricular activities policy, what percentage of your current cadets are female at Valley Forge Military Academy? And how will Valley Forge Military Charter School plan to ensure compliance with Title IX and a seamless integration of female cadets on campus for the charter school?
So currently in our Valley Forge Military Academy, we have zero females. We do and have had females in the Valley Forge Military Junior College for over 15 years. We, we are well-versed with Title IX and we would implement all activities equally.
Okay. On page 64, it talks about Title IX Compliance Officer. Who is the Title IX Compliance Officer for Valley Forge Military Academy? And will this person serve as the Valley Forge Military Charter School Title IX Compliance Officer? And if not, then is this position in the budget?
Yeah.
Question, it is in the budget.
The Assistant Principal, also the Commandant, is our Title IX, will be our nine coordinator in Valley Forge Military Charter School. In Valley Forge Military Academy, we have one Title IX Coordinator who is our Assistant Dean. And in our college, we have an Assistant Dean who is our Title IX Coordinator.
Thank you. On page 66, it says no religious belief or non-belief should be provoked promoted by Valley Forge Military Charter School. Does Valley Forge Military Academy require students to attend chapel? And will Valley Forge Military Charter School require students to attend chapel?
Valley Forge Military Academy, I've got an echo. Can someone? Valley Forge Military Academy does have a chapel service. It's a non-denomination. It's, it's part of our character program. It is on Sundays. Valley Forge Military Charter School will not have chapel. Valley Forge Military Charter School will be a day school. And they will not be here on weekends, nor will they take part in any religious services here on campus.
Thank you.
If I can just interrupt Joshua Pollock Council for the Charter School. There are references, the, each of the, the questioners are making the page numbers. And there, there's a bit of confusion here. The, the application itself goes to page 100. We're hearing references to page numbers, I think, are probably page numbers in various appendices. So if we can maybe take a break after each question, figure out where we are. So we're all literally on the same page, talking about the same policy. Have the respondent be able to have that policy in front of him or her. I think it would benefit everyone involved.
So I can certainly slow down. That's not a problem. All right. So in the student section, page 81 talks about the student assistance program. All right. So does Valley Forge Military Academy currently have a student assistance program? And who oversees and is part of that program?
Perhaps it would be easiest if we could get a BATE stamp number.
What was that number again, Dan?
It was, like, it was the student assistance program.
I'm sorry. You, so as, so as not to have an echo in this room. So I'm sorry, Mr. Bechel, can you?
It is the student assistance program policy in the appendices for the student section. It is page 81 of that section.
Right. Do you have a BATE stamp number or do you not have a BATE stamp copy?
I do. Hold on a minute, let me find it.
It's appendix F, if that helps.
Right. And you said 81, right, Dan?
Yes, it's page 81 in that section, Mike. I, I guess it's a general question. It came up when we looked through this. So the question was, does Valley Forge Military Academy currently have a student assistance program? And if so, who oversees it and who's on the team?
It's, 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 it's drugs, it's suicide prevention.
So, so Valley Forge Military Academy currently has a, a collaboration of folks that work with students that have, that, that need those type of, of resources. This includes a combination of not only the people that are in the schoolhouse, it includes the, the Commandant's Department, which also includes the medical staff, the nursing staff, the psychologists that are available as well. But that's Valley Forge Military Academy. With regards to the charter school, we do have within the budget, the, the access to the, the nursing staff that we have currently at Valley Forge, which is very familiar with, with those type of circumstances for student supports. In addition, you would have a similar background with the Assistant, Assistant Principal, who would be also the, kind of the disciplinary, would have the background relevance in that as well as the, with the principal.
Thank you. So, so the model for the charter school, that was my follow-up, was gonna be the model for the charter school is gonna, is gonna follow what the Valley Forge Military Academy currently has in place.
Yes. So it, it would, as, as far as it's been successful at this point, if we find at an area where it may not be successful and we need to engage other resources, then that's where we would move.
And the, the trainings that you're talking about with the resources that you would provide to the Valley Forge Military Charter School employees to get this student assistance program up and running, are these budgeted for? And, and do we, do you have a plan for professional development to get these off the ground?
So we, we have within the budget, the nurse is a full NFTE. She has most of that background and training and has the ability to train the staff.
Thank you. All right. Under suicide prevention, how does Valley Forge Military Academy currently train its employees regarding student suicide prevention?
Through our health center and our lead nurse, we conduct classes for all staff for signs and reporting. They, they go through a week of training on all aspects, not just suicide, on behavior with the staff. It's in our Commandant's Department mainly for our, our Valley Forge Military Academy, because they are the ones who are in the barracks or as you would call dorms. But it's also the teachers go through their training in their week prior to classes, assuming.
Okay, thank you. And then does Valley Forge Military Charter School have a plan to get the new employees up to, as far as both like monetarily and, and professional development to, to get these new employees off the ground?
We do. It will be part of their onboarding as a, as a, as a group in August of 2022.
Thank you. This section, so in this student section, there's also information about libraries and school books and library books. Does Valley Forge Military Academy currently have a library? And if so, how many books are in, in the collection and who oversees the library and circulation?
Yes, we have accredited library that works for both the high school and our college. We have a full-time librarian who has some part-time help. I don't know the number of books off the top of my head. I'll ask her tomorrow and we'll get that back to you. But yes, we have a library. Actually, we have two.
Will Valley Forge Military Charter School have a library? And will this library be separate from the Valley Forge Military Academy library?
So, so the answer would be we would, but what we're finding at this point in time is I'm sure some of the schools are finding as well is that many of the students are moving towards electronic resources, not so much a hard paperback type of version of a library. So we are the Google computers that we would end up having. They have access to our online library resources, which gives them access to literature. So we would be able to build that into the charter school as well.
So the, thank you for that. Would the Valley Forge Military Charter School hire a librarian to manage the digital and print resources?
We do not currently have that in the budget.
And we have our, our current librarian, you know, was a part-time, so it would be one of those scenarios of, of potentially bringing her on part-time as well if we're specifically utilizing those electronic resources.
Thank you. And does, does the current budget presented for Valley Forge Military Charter School have, does it have library books and other resources in the budget?
It does have library books and resources, but as a, it, it does not have a specific line item for a librarian.
How will Valley Forge Military Academy and Valley Forge Military Charter School ensure that taxpayer-funded materials from the libraries are not being used by private school students?
Physical separation. So we would, we would ensure that any of the materials that come forward to the charter school does not intermix with the material that, that currently exists on the, the main campus.
Thank you very much. Looking at the interaction between students on campus, will students that are in the charter school interact with the Valley Forge Military Academy cadets at any time? And if so, like to what extent is there gonna be interaction between the charter school students and the Military Academy cadets?
Right now, we have no interaction. Where the charter school is going to be located, it is on a separate part of campus from where the academy and the college is located. Two buildings that were in our application, I think there was, there was photos of them. They will utilize services. They will utilize our gym on the main campus. They will utilize our mess hall for meals, but they will do it at separate times and we will decon click the schools.
Thank you. Mrs. Stern and Mr. Kristofko, I see we are after 10 and we are, I've, I've got probably 20 questions left. Do we want to continue to finish this section?
I think that that makes sense. I, I know, I, I know it's gonna mean we're gonna go a little closer to 10:30, but I do think that allowing you to finish this section, Mr. Bechtel, from a, from an efficiency and organization standpoint makes the most sense. If you all are willing to.
Thank you. All right. How do you intend to engage in outreach activities for Valley Forge Military Charter School?
So, so most of the outreach that would we be doing would be through the community-based operations, so community service plans. The other would be as, as we've utilized through the Valley Forge Military Academy itself would be the parents. We call it the parent company, which would be a similar to what it's called a Parents Association. Bringing them into the fold and then integrating with outreach within the local community, since most of the parents would be from the local community.
We also, if, if I don't, if I can, please, we also have, in a non-COVID environment, we get a, a ton of requests for our Valley Forge Military Academy cadets to represent. for our Valley Forge Military Academy cadets to represent local and Philadelphia surrounding areas, events with color guards, with the band, and we would encourage the Valley Forge Military Charter School to do the same, to get out there and and support everything from veterans. Veterans Day grades to Memorial Day parades to anything. We get a ton of phone calls and a ton of requests, so we would bring them into the loop and be another area that they can go out and support the communities.
In the presentation that was given, Valley Forge Military Charter School indicated that it'll be marketing to Delaware, Chester, and Montgomery Counties. What is your target student populations? Is that are those kind of, you know, counties a limitation, or is that just your initial plan? And would you look to limit students from outside other counties for this day program? Or is it going to be an open program?
We look at it as an open program right now. If demand got too high, then we would look at limiting. But we feel that Philadelphia alone, we will get a lot of interest. Not mentioning the other counties are that are all within ten miles, some of them of the school front door. But if we have the capability of sending transportation to specific pickup points, if the need arises and the demand is there.
Thank you. On page six of the application, it stated that Valley Forge Military Charter School wanted to replicate Valley Forge Military Academy. What are some of the reasons that you feel that it would be? It would be good to replicate the the Military Academy in the charter school?
I think it's really what we're replicating is the the five cornerstones in the military structure, which is our military model. So those five cornerstone that Ms. Walch spoke about, having a battalion or a corps or a regiment, whatever we call the charter schools' rank structure, and having young men and women learn those cornerstones, come become part of a team, go through a transformational process, become a cadet in their school, and then attain, like, we've seen for ninety-three years, it builds a lot of young men into great, great people. And that's that ownership and accountability and learning how to follow before you learn how to lead. All that stuff that goes into the military model, the wearing of a uniform every day and making sure it's right. It's accounting for yourself and showing up on time. It's those things that will be stressed, and we feel they are the good parts that can be passed on. And we also know that there are people out there that would like their sons and daughters to have that opportunity.
Thank you. Looking at the per-student payment from school districts for Valley Forge Military Charter School, how does this anticipated per-student payment compare to the current tuition rate charged for Valley Forge Military Academy?
I don't, I'll have to give you a second to look at and tell you it is less. Is Eric on?
Yeah.
All right, go, Eric.
So so you're asking, just so I understand, you're asking basically, is the tuition to the charter school equivalent more or less than our current tuition for a military academy? Is that? Do I understand your question correct?
Correct.
Well, depending on the district that the student comes from, and whether or not the student is special ed or right or non-special ed, any one of those answers could be correct. It's really a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you very much. On page ten of the application, it said, we recognize that many students will come from challenging backgrounds that do not provide meaningful opportunities to maximize their individual potential. What data or evidence have you used to arrive at this conclusion?
So this is based up on what we see at at Valley Forge Military Academy. I mean, the the reason they're coming to us is because there is something that they're not getting at the public schools. And and it's and it's big, it's not any fault of the public schools, it's just that that student needs something a little different. So what we're saying, I think, on that end is that we are expecting that those students that are faring well in the public school system are going to stay in the public school system, but those students who aren't faring so well in the public school system, who feel that they're being dropped through through receive, and these are some of the reports that we get from both parents and students that attend Valley Forge on the history or the story that they have in their own public school systems. Those are the ones that are attracted to the 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 military kind of framework or the model, the the cornerstones. That's those are the things that are attracting them to the point and and their buy-in that's allowing them to be successful. So that's why we we make that statement. It's based on experiential knowledge.
Thank you. Mrs. Sage touched on counseling services, and I heard that Valley Forge Military Charter School was going to be hiring a guidance counselor, a school counselor. What type of mental health resources will you have in place to help supplement the counseling services that the Valley Forge Military Charter School students would get?
For supplemental counseling services, that would be through through the nursing team as well as the intermediate unit. The, you know, guidance counselor would be the initial point of referral and then determine the next steps for that student, what would be the best place for them to be referred to next.
And I follow up on that. Do you have the supplemental mental health resources included in the the current Valley Forge Military Charter School budget?
We do. That would that would fall under the the professional services line item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the things that was in the application was that seventy-five percent of students must participate in co-curricular physical activity. Could you just run through why, you know, we would have a cap on or we would have seventy-five percent and why we wouldn't shoot for a hundred percent, or where did that seventy-five percent of students participating in co-curricular physical activities come from?
The seventy-five percent was was really, you know, there could be limitations in terms of time if a student has private lessons for, you know, instruments or things that they could really not do it, previous, you know, mental health counseling that they would have to have outside of school. So the initial year would be to get those involved in intramurals and athletics. You know, based knowing that students may have different things they need to do after the school time when they leave. That was the reason for the seventy-five percent.
Thank you. One of the the pieces, and this may speak to what Dr. Lay was just talking about. Said that there's evidence that students do better academically at Valley Forge Military Academy than they did in their home districts. And it also said, we typically find many of our students become successful, that become successful, fall into the five oh four and IEP category. It said higher than one hundred and fifty-six percent seen in school districts, public schools. If you could just shed some light on, you know, students doing better at at Valley Forge Military Academy than in home districts, and specifically the the five oh four and IEP students seeing a dramatic increase in their success level.
Sure. So so one of the, I think, one of the key elements that we have with that group is the fact that we have smaller class sizes. We we really strive to keep. And we, so in the last few years, we've strived to keep most of the main classes at fourteen to one. For some of those classes that are a little bit more challenging, such as math, we actually have it down to lower than that, about ten to one, which is allowing us to really hyper-focus on those cadets that are just missing basic concepts. That alone is one of the areas that that we've had feedback from parents that has allowed their sons to be successful, that that more individualized attention. The second one that we end up hearing about is that we have the ability to modify if the if the student is coming in and they're they're excelling a little bit more. They're they're less prone to acting out when you challenge them more, because you can advance or you can move them into a more challenging environment with a smaller class size than you would with thirty-five students. So some of the feedback we were getting from the parents is they consider that an individualized type education plan or the ability to sit down with each of the students and kind of prioritize where they can go. Those are other areas of of where parents and student feedback has come forward to be able to demonstrate success. The other one is because it's a smaller classroom size, we've had the ability to indicate or identify students who otherwise have not been detected previously with with needs. And it's usually because we've had this higher percent within our classrooms, the teacher, a little bit, teachers are a little more attuned to identifying that there's something going on. So we're capable of identifying them faster, reaching out to the parents, asking questions, finding out that meds have just been changed, that they didn't change, and no, didn't tell anybody. And then so we're able to make quicker adjustments working with the parent with these smaller class sizes as well. So I think in general, it's just because of the type of model that we have with the smaller classes, that's why Valley Forge Military Academy is more successful than than some of the other ones, and that's why those five oh fours and IPs are doing better. The other, the other would be, to add to that, would be that structural aspect as well. So within the classrooms, we can focus more on making sure that each of them are following a timeline, their guidebook, they're they're writing down their agenda planners, and these are all things that we're finding that as time goes on, these young men just constantly need constant refresher of what they have to get done for the day. So they're not coming to class with the paper on the bottom of the bookbag.
Thank you. And one of the things I've I've heard is low class sizes, and in the in the documents you provided, student-teacher ratio jumps from approximately nine to one in the first year to twenty to one by the the fifth year. How does this compare with Valley Forge Military Academy with the student-to-teacher ratio?
So we had, so the original application that was put forward had those numbers, and I think that's what you're looking at. We had modified that accordingly. And we'll make sure that we send you that that chart as we go forward, the updated one, which shows us consistently trying to stay to that fourteen and and one ratio.
Thank you. And what is Valley Forge Military Academy's current student-to-teacher ratio?
I'm sorry, I did not hear the last question, sir.
I was just asking comparison, like, what is what is Valley Forge Military Academy's current, you know, teacher-to-student ratio? So we're look, you know, we 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 got what you anticipate the charter school is going to be.
Right. So 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 in our in our current zone, we have, we have the majority of our our core classes, math, English, the sciences, those are kept at around fourteen to sixteen to one. When we have some of our elective classes, that's where you'll see that number jump up a little bit higher, can go to eighteen or or sometimes twenty to one, but in those cases, it's not as as difficult to manage those.
Thank you. Looking at Valley Forge Military Academy, how does, how do you define success for your students? Looking at things such as standardized assessments, or what metrics do you currently use to define success for students at Valley Forge Military Academy?
So we have a recognition program called the Stars Program, which is based on their GPA on a quarterly basis. And so the students who end up earning those those stars based on their GPAs, and they have to maintain certain levels in each of the classes that gives them certain rewards, that gives them a walkout leave on a Wednesday evening, it gives them a walkout leave on a Friday, and and a few more benefits. So it's kind of, it's a, it's a positive achievement system where they perform well, they get more reward.
Do you use standardized? Certainly.
I'm sorry, Dan, I wanted to circle back to the, or this Eric saw again, I wanted, I just did a quick calculation. I'm not sure where you got the twenty to one student-to-teacher ratio. I just did a quick, it's no higher than fourteen across the board.
All right, thank you.
I also wanted to dovetail a little on that, on the recognition program is also for the academy goes outside the classroom, and we look to do the same in the Military Charter School, where we have cadets who earn awards, ribbons and medals for their uniforms, physical fitness tests they take, if they volunteer, if they do service, if they help with tours, community service, things like that, they can they can earn awards for their uniforms.
Thank you, Colonel. And Eric, I'll just follow up. On page eighty-one, and and perhaps Dr. Lay said that there was a an updated revised document that I that I don't have in front of me, but on page eighty-one, that there's a targeted staff size and teacher-to-student ratio that was included in the application, and it had a student-teacher ratio of nine to one listed for year one, a hundred students, eleven teachers, nine to one students-teacher ratio. It went up to twenty to one for year five, so that's where I got that information from.
Okay, it's, look, the way I budgeted it, though, was fourteen to one, so I'm not sure where that information is. Thank you, though, for the clarification.
All right. What metrics do you use as far as standardized assessments to evaluate the success of Valley Forge Military's current model, given that it has been identified as the model for Valley Forge Military Charter School?
I think we spoke to this a little bit before, but we do use the standardized test through the PSATs that we give through the eighth through ninth, you know, a tenth and eleventh to create goals based on where we see the, you know, needs arising. I think I spoke to adding, you know, if it was a word problem that we see arises for all grades, then we would target that in our software implementation, as well as updating of our curriculum standards through a review process if we see there's really a discrepancy. So I think that's what you're speaking to with the standardized testing.
Thank you. Follow up on Valley Forge Military Academy. What percentage of your graduates attend four-year schools, and what is your target for the charter school students?
Ninety-six percent. Last number for for college. I think our target will be in the in nineties for the charter school.
Thank you. So will you have, we we heard about dual enrollment classes. Will you have dual enrollment classes available for Valley Forge Military Charter School students?
We will, once they get into that junior and senior year timeframe. We it'll be a rare case for any of the 10th graders. We typically find that they're not mature enough to sit in a college classroom.
And when you do have dual enrollment for the charter school students, what is the partnership that you would use for a dual enrollment class for those students?
We would, we would try to engage potentially our own, our own college if necessary, but I would be, I'm not resistant to reaching out to most of the local community colleges. It's been a successful program where I came from originally down in the Northern Virginia Community College.
Oh, if I may, we have a reciprocal agreement with two of our neighbors, Eastern and Cabrini, and we send our college students and they send theirs reciprocally to both schools. So we have that opportunity also. Eastern has already been informed of our our intent to have a charter school, and they support it one hundred percent.
And we've also worked with the Valley Forge Military Academy has also worked with with Delaware County Community College as well to start investigating possibilities and choices there, too.
Thank you. Valley Forge Military Charter School proposes to have an enrollment of five hundred students within five years. Is that a a cap on the enrollment? Are you looking to cap it based on space at five hundred or for other reasons?
Those were, those are just projections. We're not, we aren't planning on capping.
All right. So would you consider expanding if there's more demand? So those projections, if you would exceed those, you would consider expanding?
We would. We have a hundred acres on on our property and so there's the full capability if if we see success of this to. Well, when we see success in this, to be able to build out and and grow the 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 school.
And then if you would not meet your projections and your enrollment numbers would not meet those, how will this impact the operations of the the charter school?
That's a difficult question to answer because if we don't, but by how many, by five students is a lot different than fifty-five students kind of thing. So we are. You know, we we've proposed a budget and a plan based on the number of students that we've submitted.
We would also, we would also state that, you know, we're, you know, the numbers that we have are based on the the idea that, you know, we've we were pretty. We have a pretty good idea what we would get on the male population, but because this is also including young women as well. This would allow us to be able to double the potential population within our, within the school.
Thank you. And I believe that is the last question that I have for this section.
This is just a general, am I allowed to go back to a question that was asked earlier about numbers but braced by by grade level? That that actually is in on page fifty-seven of the document that you have where we do projections based on grade level.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all very much. So at this time, I'd like to announce that on. I'm going to entertain a motion in a moment to recess this meeting. And I'd like to announce that the next meeting date is scheduled for, I believe it's a Wednesday, May twelfth. So that everyone's aware. And Mr. Kristofko, is there anything further you would want to announce at this time before I entertain a motion to recess?
No.
Okay, well, I would, I'd like to thank everybody for being here and participating and thank our administrators for being out again. We had a rather late night last night. We did get through the section, which is nice, and at this moment I would entertain a motion to recess this meeting.
So moved.
From Ms. Solomon and a second from Ms. Goldman. All those in favor? I don't, wait, I just have to look, one, two, three, four, five. Six, seven, I don't see Mr. Jubilee, but he might be on my next page. Eight, nine, okay. I can't see everyone. All right. So the motion to recess, it passes unanimously and we will see you May twelfth. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
All right. Good night. Thank you.